It's at seven o'clock. So, I just said I don't know why we have a gavel, because we don't really need one. All we have to do is just beat on the microphone. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. It is 7:02 at this time. I would like to welcome you to the May 8th meeting of the Jefferson County Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, the board conducted an executive session to discuss pending litigation, pursuant to KRS 61.8101C of the Kentucky Open Meetings Act, and a work session to discuss the tentative budget. No action was taken. And I know at this particular week, it's a special week for us because it's Teacher Appreciation Week. So, I have to say something about the teachers before we go into our moment of silence. Also, for the folks that are standing up after our student presentations, you will have an opportunity to sit down. But if you're like me and you need to sit earlier, there are some seats over here in the overflow room. Just like for you to be as comfortable as you possibly can, but I really don't want you to miss the students either because we've got a fantastic presentation that will be made for us tonight. So, thank you to everyone that is here. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I tried to find several comments to talk about our great teachers. So, just quickly before we do a moment of silence, it says, "A teacher takes a hand, opens a mind, and touches a heart. A great teacher builds character, inspires dreams, encourages creativity, builds confidence, makes learning fun, touches our hearts, and changes lives forever." And then a statement that I make many times is, "They may not remember everything you said, but they will never forget how you made them feel." Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge allegiance, and our students are going to lead us in the pledge, please.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the God who provides us, one nation under God, indivisible, with the virginity and justice
At this time, our vision statement will be read by Board Member Dr. Lisa Willner.
All Jefferson County Public School students graduate prepared, empowered, and inspired to reach their full potential and contribute as thoughtful, responsible citizens of our diverse, shared world.
Thank you, Dr. Willner. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Terry Robinson, who is going to bring us our recognitions and resolutions for this evening. Ms.
Dr. Polio, Board Chair Diane Porter, and members of the Jefferson County Board of Education, once again, we are very proud to recognize and receive a student demonstration of learning from the Learn, Invest, Friend, Teach Jefferson County Public Schools Superintendent Student Advisory Council. Teams from the council will give a brief overview of their passion project, which will include what they have learned and experienced from their research and work, the action steps, and solutions to their passion project. Each team of students will introduce themselves and talk briefly about their passion project. Students, please come forward to begin your presentation.
Hello, my name is DeMontria Broach. I'm a junior at Seneca High School, and our passion project is about the lack of student motivation.
I'm Kealan Frazier from Fern Creek High School, and I'm a junior. And 1.2 million students every year dropouts from high school. Every 26 seconds, there's a student that drops out, and 7,000 every day is what this totally equals up to. As you see in the pie chart up above, you see that 23% of these students drop out to the lack of parental and educational support. 33% of these students were bored and wasn't interested in the class they took, and 26% felt that they didn't have the confidence to do the work, along with the 18% that were intimidated by the work and grew fearful that they couldn't complete it. Sadly, in most of these cases, it concludes that 75% of incarcerated population to be of high school dropouts.
I'm Ally Alder, and I attend Ballard High School. And our goal is that we know that in order to make a change, we need to provide more encouragement within the classrooms and better teacher-student relationships to increase the motivation.
Hello, my name is Delisha Jackson, and I'm a junior at the Academy of Shawnee, and I'm here to discuss where we start, and that's by providing necessary funding for resources in each class and find ways to promote positive energy throughout the classroom, whether it's encouraging the students academically or creating programs for students and staff to further connect.
Hello, I'm Montery Haynes, and I'm from Central High School, and I'm here to talk about what we can do for the future. It's up to teachers and everybody involved in JCPS, from students to APs and staff members to want more from the district. Students should be given more opportunities to fully engage in planning for the future of their life instead of being engaged in bookwork for now. It doesn't help us out.
My name is Tajik Bradley, and I'm from the Academy of Shawnee. And as a member of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, we hope to produce resources and programs that give students hope and motivation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tajon Perkins, and I'm from the Academy of Shawnee. And for our project, we want to talk about student job motivation in school because for our students, most of them aren't going to go to post-secondary schools, and we know this. So, we need to start being able to encourage them to get jobs during and after school so that they can focus on building a foundation for careers once they graduate.
All right. So, when we did our research, we started right at home. We found the Academies of Louisville program. This program is incredible. It's a great program, and I'm actually an ambassador for it. It builds essential skills for career readiness. The only problem with that is what it doesn't do is push the understanding of the importance of having a job or a career. And that can be a big difference in going to college or having this humongous future that is really important. It is essential that they have a job for the future to keep them going, to keep them moving. Stage of Life took a poll and found that only 41.8% of teens saw education as a number-one goal, a number-one priority, and that is horrible.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Knuckles, and I'm from Moore Traditional High School. And like what he said, less than half the teens put education first before anything else, and that is an issue that needs to be solved. They need to put education first before anything else so that they can get that career that they want. And career-based education is like that, it's like turning down a job offer. So, it's important to find solutions to these issues, and we have some.
I'm Zev Myrovitz. I'm from Ballard High School, and some of our solutions include introducing careers on, at an early age, so kids can take specific classes for what they want to do, as well as bringing in local businesses and presenting internships and business shadowing so kids can get into the job at a younger age and further their career.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandy Brown, and I'm from Pledge Ridge Park High School. Today, we are here to show you a video that we've created to show the isolation of special needs and the easiest solution to this problem, which is allowing these students into our
I would be open to have people with special abilities in my classes because I feel like it'd be a great learning opportunity for both populations.
They would do a really good job in our electives because they have much potential, and they can easily adapt to our environment.
I think it would be a good idea because it would make them feel like less different than most of us because they really aren't, and it would just help everybody like become more accepting.
I think that the special needs population in JCPS is treated very unfairly, and they definitely aren't allowed to have as many resources that are accessible to them as say other students. And I think it's a clear issue that has to be brought to, and I would have to touch you on.
Yes, it could be possible. You just have to train the teacher, the regular ed teacher, in the ways that you're going to have to deal with that student. You just have to make sure that that regular ed teacher feels comfortable with those things that are different about that student and knows what they can and can't do to help that student process further.
Art. You want to take art?
Yeah.
Art. And, uh, and I want to be in big classes.
I would be open to have people with special abilities in my classes because I feel like it'd be a great learning opportunity for both populations.
They would do a really good job in our electives because they have much potential, and they can-
I'm Kaden Brothers, and I am a junior at the Phoenix School of Discovery. As you can see, there was a lot of positive feedback from that video. So, to recap our solution, our solution is to incorporate special needs students into mainstream elective classes with regular students. If we expose the special needs population more to a regular school environment, help them realize the reality of their potential, interact with them on a regular basis, their educational experiences and social skills will increase exponentially.
Good evening. My name is Kaia Anderson from Wagner High School, and we will be discussing the need for diversity in higher-level courses.
Why do we need diversity in higher-level courses? First of all, diversity in higher-level courses does prepare students to be career-ready. It prepares students to be globally ready for students as citizens who will be participating in a diverse atmosphere. And it also allows students to have a more, no, to have more growth and reflection by having just been immersed in different cultures and different people around them that they might not necessarily be around.
Hello, my name is Scarlett. I'm from ESL Newcomer Academy. In my school, if everyone spoke my first language, I would not have to speak English. But I have to speak English all day because that is only the common language between us. More importantly, my school is like the United Nations. I grew up only with Muslim, but is, in my school, there are people from different religion and many nationalities. In this world, I must know how to get along with people from every ethnicity, every religion, and every race. It prepares me for the world I will grow up in. And I am, as a student in ESL Newcomer Academy, I am a part of the global community, and I am becoming a world citizen.
I'm Jamila Plano- I'm Jamila Plano, and I'm at Tin Valley High School, and here are some of our solutions to our project. We could have professional development days where teachers learn in depth about other cultures because it's very important. How can a teacher educate, how, if a teacher isn't educated, how can they educate their students? And also, stop placing students in higher-level classes just because of the advanced placement test they took in third grade.
We could allow counselors to function and like counsel with their students to provide them with the necessary tools they would need to be placed in these higher-level courses based on their abilities and not just a test they took when they were younger. And in this way, we'll be have a very diverse, well-rounded school. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Malan Bailey, and I am a senior at the Academy of Shawnee. My group and I would like to discuss with you the overuses of ISAP in schools. Because of ISAP, students miss class and don't have the resources in ISAP to effectively complete their work. ISAP makes kids feel isolated, which contributes to their unproductive behavior. ISAP is also used as a temporary punishment, and the root of the problem is never really dealt with.
My name is Ashley Johnson. I'm a sophomore at the Phoenix School of Discovery. And students' behavior problems are caused by skill deficits, um, deficits. Students should never be, students should never be punished for behaviors they cannot help.
Hello, my name is Zion Bonds, and I go to Central High School. The established punishments create resentment and damage the student-teacher relationship.
An action that could be used to solve the problem of overuses of ISAP would be to have counselors who actually counsel. Many students across JCPS never get the chance to see or speak with their counselor until it is time for the ACT or applying for colleges. We need counselors or therapists who are in the school to help students deal with real-life problems in the students' lives. Students feel like we are accepted or expected to be perfect all the time without regard to what we might be going through at home, and then we bring those problems into the classroom and get in trouble for it.
The students need to know they are cared about. Students are less likely to act out in class with the teacher who they don't want to disappoint. If a student feels that love and care from staff that doesn't give up on them, they are more likely to want to make them proud. Before a teacher's correct, they need to connect.
And also, just like any other learning process, you can't learn to swim from a person you don't trust to keep you from drowning, and you can't learn from a teacher you don't trust to keep you from failing. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christopher Malal, and I'm from Louisville High School. I'm a sophomore, and our topic is student assignment. And student assignment allows students to apply to the high schools that they want when they're in middle school, but a lot of times, those students don't know what they want because they, they don't know what the high schools have to offer. And a lot of the programs that high schools offer are unknown to the middle school students. And our main goal was to come up with ways for the information to be, information of high school programs and other things like that to be passed on to middle school students, and developing a program that is desirable to today's economy.
Hi, my name is Samantha McDowell. I'm a junior at Manuel High School. One of our goals is to create a program consisting of high school mentors that will go to middle schools to talk to the students about the academic programs they are involved in. The high school mentors have firsthand experience with their programs, so they are the best people to talk to middle school students about their experiences. To be a mentor, the high school students would have to fit set requirements, including a certain GPA minimum, and have permission from their administrators to attend. JCPS already has the resources it needs to get information to students and their parents or guardians about their high school options, but it is unknown where to get these resources or there is no way to access them. By providing the booklet of high school choices at registration for their eighth-grade school year, we know that JCP, we know that JCPS families will have the information they need in order to make a decision for their high school career. The Choices booklet provides a breakdown of all available programs in JCPS at each school, allowing students to choose a school best suited for their ideal course of study.
Hi, my name is Afy Tegneji, and I'm a student from Aricoi High School. STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, as some of you already know. In an increasingly complex world where technology and innovation are nothing short of trailblazers, STEM does not only help students band, compete, and grow, but equips them with skill, knowledge, with skill and knowledge to solve difficult problems by making sense of given information. Aside from the opportunities STEM provides for teachers, students, and community members, the proposed resolution solves almost all problems related to student assignment, from the increasing cost of transportation to stressful applications.
Dr. Polio, Board Chair Diane Porter, and members of the Jefferson County Board of Education, area superintendents, if you all will please come forward and assemble in the middle for a group picture, and I would also like the principals and the principal designees to join them as well. Please join them in the middle, everybody. Mr. Hopman, if you will please join them as well. As soon as the students get quickly seated, I will ask for all the parents to please stand and be recognized. All parents that are in attendance today, please stand and be recognized. Dr. Polio and members of the Jefferson County Board of Education, this concludes our recognitions for this evening, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a motion at this time to receive the recognitions? Board Member Brady, seconded by Board Member Geese, all those in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Before we dismiss you, we have to tell you how fabulous you are. You are amazing, and there is hope. You are our hope. Thank you for being here. We do not require that you stay for the whole meeting, but we're glad we got to have dinner with you, so thank you so much. Have a good rest of the year. I hope to see some of you at graduations. Enjoy your evening. You did a fantastic job. Thank you so much. That is a big leap sometimes. Yeah. Relevant stuff. I think it makes a difference for leadership. It was, it was fantastic. It was so meaningful. As our students are leaving, for those that are standing around the walls and in the back, if you'd like to have a seat, I am trying to move this agenda as quickly as possible. I have to make up some time from the last meeting. I'm in the timeout chair, so if you would just come in and have a seat so we can move So, how about more quickly than possible? If we could just get you to exit to the lobby, please, so we can move on with the agenda? I think we have seats for everyone now, if everyone would like to have a seat. Before we move to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of this current meeting agenda, I want to say something about the number of speakers. At our last meeting, we had a phenomenal number of speakers, 27 speakers, which took us until 10 o'clock before we got to the business of the board. I have received a lot of concern about getting to the business of the board at 10 o'clock. So, it's our goal from this point forward to move forward to have our speakers limited to an hour. And so, now, when you call in to speak, you will be told, we will take your name to speak, but there's a potential that we will have to adjust the agenda accordingly. Our folks that are watching us or live streaming us are not happy that we are not getting to the business of the board to 10 o'clock. So, I will take your complaints and concerns, but this is a business meeting. We have a lot of important business to take care of tonight. We are going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda with the understanding that we have 19 speakers, which is 57 minutes, but that means I'm going to rush you in and out, and if you don't have to take your whole three minutes. We have a lot of important business to take care of tonight. It is my goal as the chair to let every voice be heard, but it's also my responsibility of the chair to make sure that the business of the board is seen for our constituents all over the county. So, having said that, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda for this evening? Board Member Geese, seconded, Ms. Duncan, all those in favor, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Is there a recommendation for the approval of the minutes for the previous meeting? Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Board Member Horn, seconded, Dr. Cole, all those in favor, motion passes unanimously. It's my pleasure at this time to present and introduce our superintendent, Dr. Marty Polio, with the superintendent's report. Dr. Polio.
Thank you, Chair Porter and board members. I'm happy to bring you the superintendent report for May 8th, 2018. As you recall, two weeks ago, it seems like just yesterday, but two weeks ago, I recapped all the unprecedented work that had taken place over the past 10 months in JCPS. I also clearly said that we've done that work together as a team, and I stress the word "we," that we've worked together as a team to do that. I believe even, even the recently released audit report from the KDE highlighted this work that has taken place, that we have done over the past 10 months. And I'll make, say it again, make no mistake about it, it's been a team effort, all the work that's taken place, myself, the cabinet, this board, our principals, and school-based educators have all been a big part of this work. With all this, without all this and this teamwork, we wouldn't have the positive momentum that we have today. But clearly, even in the face of all the controversy, we can't stop the work. We have a lot that we need to get done, and we're going to continue to do that. So, tonight, I would like to highlight the work again that is currently underway or about to take place. This is hard and challenging and very difficult work, but I do believe we're in the midst of something great in this district, so I would like to highlight a few of those things. In three weeks, we will bring to the board a proposal for our transition continuum work and backpack of success skills. It will be the foundation of everything we do in this district and the classroom. We have worked collaboratively with many groups to produce a plan that will transform the classroom experience for each and every child in JCPS, not just some, but each and every child in JCPS, and ensure that they are ready for their next transition, whether that is middle school, high school, or college. We're excited for you to see the work that's taking place, and we will begin this work in August with the entire district. Also, tonight, you will give final approval to our racial equity policy. This innovative policy acknowledges our current achievement gap and disproportionate data, but more importantly, lays out a plan- but more importantly, lays out a plan to reduce and even eliminate these disparities and ensure that we provide equitable access to all students and hold ourselves accountable in the coming years to true change. Our facilities committee will be meeting tomorrow to discuss our Vision 2020 facilities plan for the innovative changes that we want to have in the next 30 months and will bring to you in the next two months. I envision this including building new schools and significantly renovating some of our schools that have been in need for several decades. This plan is a first of its kind that will be brought to this board that will address significant facility issues that are going to happen in the short term as we begin to plan for the long term. After you approve the most significant reorganization of our central office in many years, we are busy right now interviewing many candidates for those cabinet-level positions. I've been inspired by the high level and high-quality applicants that we've had that even in the face of all this controversy want to be a part of special things that are taking place here in JCPS. We hope to continue to have big announcements about our new cabinet members in the near future. And we also, as always, have a continued and committed effort to ensure compliance with all laws, statutes, and regulations within JCPS. We continue to work with schools and central office to emphasize the importance of this foundational work. Transparency and compliance go hand in hand. The message from this board and me is very clear. Compliance is not an option, it's an expectation and a requirement for all in JCPS. Our Alternative School Task Force will meet for the first time to begin their work on May 23rd. We look forward to the recommendations that they provide for better services that produce better educational outcomes for some of our most at-risk students in JCPS. The W E B DuBois School is ready to roll. We have a full sixth-grade class that had its first orientation, an enthusiastic administrative team, and they are beginning to hire staff members. So we're very excited about the launch of this innovative school in JCPS. Finally, we're developing a new scholarship fund that I'm excited to discuss, and this will be from the administrators at JCPS. I envision this scholarship to be a substantial award that will allow first-generation college students the opportunity to go to college, have it paid for, and it may be the difference in them going to college or not. I plan on beginning this scholarship fund, and I will ask cabinet, other central office staff members, and administrators to also donate to this fund, and hopefully, at this time next year, to award scholarships, multiple scholarships, in excess of $10,000 a year. So what all this work that we are doing, that is substantial and significant work that we will be bringing to you in the coming months, is that we are putting students first in JCPS. We are committed to showing up and doing the work every single day in the face of the extreme challenges that we have going on right now. I know we will continue to work together as a team, the eight of us to work together as a team, as we make these positive changes in JCPS. And finally, no one knows more about showing up and doing the work than our thousands of teachers in JCPS, and I have to finish my report today recognizing our teachers in JCPS. I'm inspired every day by the great teachers in this district. Not many people have the opportunity to see so many teachers in so many schools on a regular basis. I want all of our teachers to know that they are truly supported and appreciated, and I wish them a Happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you, Dr. Polio. Are there teachers in the room? If you just raise your hand so we could just give you a special shout-out, if teachers... Thank you. We are now going to move on to the speakers for the evening, and we're going to start with persons addressing the board about an agenda item, information or consent item. There are 11 speakers to speak on that, and the item that they are speaking on is in the consent agenda, the racial equity policy. And there is something that I have to read before I can invite you up. But again, you have, just to put this on your mind, you have three minutes to speak, and sorry, but that's it for tonight. Three minutes, because we want to try to get this done as quickly as possible. So having said that, let me get to my little speech part. It says, "In accordance with Board Policy 1.421, the Board expects that persons who have signed up to address the Board will limit their remarks to the subject that they have listed at the time they signed up, that their presentation will not include any abusive remarks about that subject, and that they will present their remarks in a manner that is consistent with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Also, in accordance with Board Policy, the Board reserves the right to limit, extend, or terminate discussion on any subject. Speakers before the entire Board are not allowed to use props, displays, or any other objects during the presentations. However, informational handouts may be given to the Assistant Secretary to the Board for distribution prior to or following the meeting. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the Board and may not share these minutes with any other speaker. At the end of two and a half minutes, a bell will sound once. You will then have 30 seconds to finish your statement. At the end of three minutes, the bell will sound twice, indicating that your time is up. The superintendent will look into the speaker's issues, and if necessary, represent the Board in following up or recommend action to the Board. The full Board policy concerning public participation in open meetings is available for viewing on our website and at our sign-in sheet." So it is my pleasure to start with the speakers on agenda items, and I will call the first three names, and so that you'll know that you're up next. Our first speaker will be Dave Christopher. Our second speaker will be Alice Houston, and our third speaker will be Pastor Corey Shul. So, Mr. Christopher, please come up. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. Circle.
Got you. Okay, cool. All right. Good evening, Superintendent Polio, Chair Porter, and the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about the policy that puts us squarely at the crossroad of right and wrong, fairness and inequity, successful outcomes for all, or failed outcomes for far too many students of color. If JCPS is in fact willing to take into account historical, social, and institutional factors when hiring, teaching, creating policy, and allocating resources, I know that you will in fact begin to turn the tide of the past injustice perpetrated on our students of color. I don't say this as some clairvoyant with the ability to predict the future. I say this as the founder and executive director of a youth program that does the very things that this policy is being asked to do, and seeing firsthand the results of hiring a diverse staff of instructors to teach our students, teaching curriculum that has as diverse as the students that we teach, and teaching our classes with cultural and historical relevance to those same students. In addition, we allocate and align our very limited resources to meet the unique needs of our students. We meet them where they are. That's why I can be encouraged by Angel, a student that came to us with multiple referrals and suspensions and literally failing each and every one of her classes. Angel went from a GPA of 1.2 to a current GPA of 3.1. Her counselor notified her that she would be enrolled in AP classes next year as a sophomore. She also has been asked to tutor other students in a class that she struggled in most, and that was math. I can be encouraged by Zee, who came to us from an alternative school where he's placed because of his violent outbursts. Zee had been repeatedly removed from class and sometimes school because of his behavior. One of his teachers gave us a call and asked us if he could attend AMPED. She believed that working with music might help him to better control his anger. We, of course, said yes, and just like Angel, he was failing all of his courses. The difference was that he had been diagnosed with mild autism and disassociative disorder. After just six months, he was able to return to his home school, and after returning to his home school, his grades began to improve. His behavior has greatly improved. In a year and a half, he has had no disciplinary actions. He became an AV student through his own hard work and connection back to learning. His most recent report card was all A's, and I know that because his mother texted him to me while I was in New York City on business, and that made my day. I say this not to brag about what AMPED is doing, but as a testament to how we are doing it. The answer that we are, the answer is that we are doing it in the manner this policy is requiring that it be done. I close by saying that I am an advocate for all students and support all students. It is for this reason that I ask you to support this policy. Thank you.[1193.48][1193.48](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Houston?
Welcome, Ms. Houston. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alice Houston. I'm a local business owner and a longtime advocate and supporter of public education. Tonight, however, I am happy to stand before you as co-chair, along with Aldwyn Hilton, of 15,000 Degrees, Louisville's African-American Education Initiative. 15K stands in support of the proposed racial education equity policy, and I personally stand in support of this policy as well. As you know, this is a unique time within the educational arena in Louisville, Kentucky. Many things may be in flux, but one thing remains constant: our students need us. They need us to ensure that they are able to enjoy the promise of education and the positive prospects that a good education provides. They need to be assured that excellence with equity is more than a tagline or slogan. The racial education equity policy is a meaningful step in that direction. This board has an opportunity to not only pass, but pass unanimously, an historic and long-overdue policy that will make a difference for the district as well as a whole, as well as the 52,257 students of color. These students and families are counting on you to care and to provide an educational system that sets them up for success. Once passed, this policy must be alive. It must be acted on. We have all seen policies that have been written, passed, recorded in minutes, and then placed on the shelf to collect us. The transformative power of this game-changing policy is in its implementation and accountability. The policy must be operationalized and monitored. We, at 15K, are excited about this long-awaited policy. We are committed to serving as both a community partner and a critical friend as we collectively work toward a better system that serves all students well and accelerates opportunities, access, and success for students of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Houston.[1367.83][1367.83](applause) Pastor Shul, welcome this evening.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Corey Shul, and I serve as senior pastor of the Burnett Avenue Baptist Church in Fern Creek, which is a congregation with scores of JCPS students, teachers, and administrators. My eight-year-old son is an enthusiastic second grader at Tully Elementary School, and I'm here today to lend my voice to the chorus of those urging our duly-elected board to respond to the diversity of people who have elected you by voting in support of the racial equity policy. W E B DuBois, in 1903, stated that the problem of the 20th century is the problem of the color line. Sorrowfully, by all indications, what DuBois identified as the pernicious problem of the 20th century remains a significant concern 18 years into the 21st century. You have the opportunity to make this reality less so by not only passing the racial equity policy and thereby beginning the process of eradicating disparities amongst marginalized groups, but also by resourcing fully the implementation of this policy. This will put JCPS at a higher level of dedication for equity. And as we embark upon this journey, please ensure that this initiative gets the attention that it deserves, including respecting the voices and suggestions of the advisory council, by providing adequate training, which is such a necessary component of this policy's success, and by being transparent as to our school system's progress in implementing this policy and its effect on the climate of our schools. Again, I commend the Board for considering this critical policy. Victor Hugo was correct. Nothing is more powerful than an idea whose time has come. The racial equity policy is most certainly an idea whose time has come. Thank you.[1488.21][1488.21](applause)
Thank you, Pastor Shul. Our next speakers will be Dawn Wilson, Anthony Smith, and Jenny Jean Davidson. Dawn Wilson, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Chair Porter, Superintendent Polio, and members of this august body of boards. I'm here not only as a commissioner of the Human Relations Commission, but also as the education chair. Many of you all consider us your critical friend. And as your critical friend, I want to say that we commend you for passing on the first reading the racial equity policy. Not only does it put Louisville on a different plane on equity, but it also separates those who say they are in favor of equity and those who are not. See, as your critical friend, I want you to understand that this just doesn't lift some votes, it lifts all votes. But please keep in mind that the disparities suffered by the marginalized communities need a little bit more than just something being passed. Tonight, I urge you not only just to pass it, but to pass it unanimously. I also urge you to remember that we need to do more than just pass it, but we need to take the resources for implementation and make sure those resources are used. We need to consider training in the aspect of this policy. We need to make sure that the council and the advisory that is given is respected and taken to heart, and then utilized. We like to ask you, when you are providing access for these marginalized groups, that is not something to be ignored but to be applauded, and we need to encourage all that are involved to do so. Because this is just not one initiative, this is a big initiative, and it means a lot, not only to you, but to our students, to our businesses, to the people in this room. It sets us apart, and given the times that we live in right now, we need to stand apart and say to those who disparage education, "You're wrong. We are Jefferson County Public Schools, and we believe in racial equity. And as your critical friend, we will do everything we can to support you in your efforts." Have a beautiful evening.[1683.71][1683.71](applause)
Thank you.[1686.11][1686.11](applause) Our next speaker is Anthony Smith. Anthony Smith? Okay, Mr. Hearn's checking to make sure he's not outside. I'm going to go on to Jenny Jean Davidson. Ms. Davidson, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Jenny Jean Davidson. I am a very proud JCPS graduate. I'm the mother of a pretty awesome JCPS graduate and also of a JCPS 11th grader. My kids have been in JCPS since kindergarten, many of those years at the Brown School. I could not be happier or prouder of the education they received, and more important of the community experience that allowed them to grow up into the young men that they are. I feel 100% superfluous after the student presentations this evening, because they made my point for me, which is that every child in this community was made to be magnificent. And it is our job, as the grown-ups, to give them everything they need to be that magnificent person that they were made to be. And there is nothing that those students said that I could say better. I'm in support of the racial equity policy because I love JCPS, and like one of the students in the first group said, "I want more from my district. I want every kid who comes into this district to fall into the category of..." I want every kid who comes into this district to fall into the category of ready, prepared. I want that vision about each and every child to be true." I believe the racial equity policy is an important step in that direction. So, thank you for bringing us this far. I want to thank the superintendent for pushing it along. I see how you're choosing all the easiest things to deal with in your first little room. Way to go. Thanks to Board Member Cole, my own board member. I appreciate you. I know you were very involved in the policy. As always, I'm thankful for all y'all and the leadership of Ms. Porter. You're my hero. I want to thank my friends who served on the ad hoc committee and the staff at JCPS. A lot of people have put a lot of work into this, and so I'm excited that we could make history by passing it unanimously tonight and feel -- and we could feel really good about that. And that would be the easy part, because crafting and adopting an equity policy, as hard as it is, is nothing compared to putting it into implementation in a way that creates that magic between the grown-ups and the children in the school building that is how it comes to fruition. So, thanks for your work so far. Buckle up; we can do hard things. So let's step forward and pass this unanimously and then make it real. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Our next speakers will be Ral Cunningham, Senator Gerald Neal, and Brent McKim. Mr. Cunningham, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and to the board. I'm Ral Cunningham, president of the Louisville branch of the NAACP and NAACP National Board Member. The Louisville branch commends the Jefferson County Public School for the step that you took on April the 24th and will finalize tonight with the passage of Board Policy 09-131. Providing all students an equitable education has been a cornerstone of the NAACP since we were organized in 1909. For too many years, too many children, particularly African-American and other minorities and underprivileged persons from all groups have been subjected to lesser educational opportunities, leading to lesser opportunities for success in their personal and professional lives. You, the board, is to be commended for adopting a policy which faces and recognizes the racial inequities in our school system. Acknowledging the issue is a monumental step, especially since it is a step that you, the board, initiated and will adopt without the encouragement or direction of a managerial audit by the State Board of Education. Not only are you acknowledging the problem, but the policy puts in place programs, policies, procedures to address the now-known and declared issue. These programs, policies, and procedures are to address head-on the problems and, in doing so, will make our community better by ensuring that each student who enrolls in JCPS will get a full and complete education. To ensure that that policy works, the policy contains accountability measures. You, the board, will be held accountable for addressing the racial inequity issues, but also the superintendent, central office, teachers, and all personnel in the school system. Everyone is to be accountable. And what distinguishes this policy from all others is that you will have a community accountability board that regularly reports to you and to the community. This accountability board will report on a regular basis on each party having a role to play in addressing the racial equity gap. We, the Louisville branch NAACP, commend you on this policy, and thank you in advance for your vote tonight to put in place an historic policy that will do nothing but make all of us, our students, more successful and will make a better community. We thank you, and we look forward to continuing working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Senator Neal, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Chair Porter, and good evening.
Good evening.
I am here in support of the racial equity plan. I bring you greetings for the commitment that you have and that you've exercised as a board in educating our children. Quite often, public service is difficult, and your reward is in the work, and of course the results. However, as you know, the door has been left open, and not only is the wolf at the door, the wolf is in the house. I'm speaking, of course, of the ill-advised, recommended takeover of our schools. I located my kindergarten teacher the other day. She was my first teacher at the old Phyllis Sweetley School. Looking back, it is uncanny that she has always been with me, an inspiration, just like every teacher I had since. Shielded from most of the complexities of a society, among other things, I felt the pains of the forces of society that were rooted in the past, and those pains still take place. Those dynamics are still taking place in our society now. Fought with racial animus, insensitivity, and the effects of a legacy that was constructed to depreciate the value of people of color, and I might add, people living on the margins. We're suffering from that today. It is alive and well. Many of us are in denial of its existence. You've heard it: If they would just work a little harder. Their parents don't care. There is not much you can do with them. What a convenient lie, based on ignorance and denial. And I have to tell you, I'm worried about those who are in denial. That's why I'm here today to applaud you for putting this issue, that I believe will have a profound positive effect on the district, upon the table for consideration. It is wise, just, and it is long overdue, and it must be more than words, but real calculated action. Adopting this policy will give you better tools to achieve a more comprehensive, uniform, and effective method of achieving accountability district-wide. But this is another step, and it will be just another step unless board action and unwavering support is given to this and related efforts to achieve the results that we all want. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Neal, for being here. Mr. Brent McKim. Mr. McKim, welcome. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Chair Porter, members of the school board, Superintendent Polio. I am Brent McKim, president of the Jefferson County Teachers Association, and it is my privilege to be here this evening to add, on behalf of the 6,100 teachers in Jefferson County Public Schools that I represent, our collective voice in support of this racial equity policy. We're very proud to have been a part of the development of this policy, and we are excited about this because we know that we are much more likely to reach our destination when we are very clear about where it is that we want to go. And I think this policy makes very clear our commitment to where we want to go. We want to reach a point where all students, but particularly our students of color, have access to the resources, support, individual attention, and rich learning experiences that our students in our highest-performing schools receive. Every student deserves that opportunity, and this policy, I think, makes clear our commitment to that. We look forward to working with the school district to help accomplish that. We're particularly proud of the Jefferson County Teachers Association's diversity training modules that we provide, and we would love to integrate that work with the collective work that will be necessary to achieve this vision. So we're excited about that opportunity. We know that it's not enough to just know where you want to go. You have to begin the journey, and you have to begin the journey together collaboratively, and we're excited about that potential and that opportunity. Because in the end, what that allows us to accomplish is something that is the right thing for the students of Jefferson County. We need to reach a point where all of our students can have that expectation of a rich learning experience and the expectation of success. And we look forward to working with all of our community partners, the school board, Superintendent Polio, and the district administration to help accomplish that. We urge you to vote in favor of this racial equity policy this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McKim, for being here. Our last two speakers on agenda item with the racial equity policy, Mr. Sam Johnson and Mr. Iscarno Mansilla. Sam Johnson, Mr. Johnson, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. My name is Samuel Johnson. I serve as director of youth development and education at the Louisville Urban League, and I'm a proud parent of a JCPS student attending Audubon Traditional Elementary School. At the Louisville Urban League, two of our focus areas are justice and education. We focus on justice to elevate the concerns of the community and to be a voice for those who feel voiceless, and in education, we provide school-age youth with out-of-school-time programs that support academic success and educational equity advocacy. The Louisville Urban League fully supports the racial equity policy because all too often communities of color are left outside of education reform efforts, just as students of colors are often left behind in their education. There must be an acknowledgement that people of color, African-Americans in particular, did not design the broken systems, and because our children have been so significantly or so negatively impacted, we are hopeful that the policy will influence real change. The policy acknowledges the persistent gaps in achievement, opportunities, and disciplinary actions that are based on race. To close those gaps and furthermore, if we really care about the success of all students, continuous cultural competency, training, and inclusive curriculum -- I'm sorry, training, accurate and inclusive curriculum, diversity in staffing and resources that follow the schools with the greatest needs must be the highest priority of this district. This policy clearly defines what will be different for students of color who are presently and have historically been underserved by current policy and practices. The Louisville Urban League applauds JCPS and the Diversity, Equity, and Poverty Department for their leadership and asks the board to fully approve and implement the policy on racial equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Welcome, Mr. Iscarno. Welcome for being -- thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening. In case you don't know me, my name is Eduardo Mansilia. I am no graduate from Jefferson County Public School. You realize that. But I have four kids who are Jefferson County Public School graduates. One actually will be in June 1st, last day, to say bye-bye to the school. I address you as a person who were elected by popular vote, and I really don't care what happened. You are responsible to us because we bought you. We choose you, and I don't care the title that you will get. You have our support and commitment. I come into talk for my own experience because I had the privilege to be the director of the Americana Community Center with children from all over the world. And this is a process that perhaps is overdue, but finally we got it. And this is a policy that is not just to be in another document in our computers, another piece of paper in a shelf. It's a document that has to be live, supported with resources, meaning money, training, with cultural humility, to opportunity to everyone, you as a board, us as a parent, and a community to grow, to develop a new sense of what is Louisville today. I applaud you. I want to say, please say yes. Please move to the future because the future is the present. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We're going to move on to the speakers on our non-agenda items, and I think there are several students on here, and I'm going to take the liberty of calling the students first. I realize that tomorrow's a school day, and this is a three-minute speech, but we're honoring teachers, and so now I'm honoring students. Michael Biggers, Mr. Biggers, are you here? Welcome. Thank you for being here. And after Mr. Biggers, it looks like Don Booth and Michael Hufford are three students. Welcome, Mr. Biggers.
Good evening. My name is Michael Biggers, and I am a senior at Seneca High School. I just want to first start off by saying to everyone in the room, and definitely the board members, that we are standing with you, the future educators. This is our future, and the things that are going on now affect us more than anyone. I have had people come to me and tell me that I should not go into education because of all the things that are going on, and that really made me think: Should I do this? If I do this? If I don't do this? Then what's next? I didn't really know how to respond to people when they tell me that or question my decision, but now I know. I say to all those people who tell us, "No, don't do it." We have to, because this is our future, and we want to see an education system grow bigger than ever before. JCPS has prepared us for our future as educators, and I can honestly say that we are ready. So let me just tell you that we are standing with you, fighting for our education, fighting for our amazing district, JCPS. With all the things going on in education, makes me even more excited to do this, because soon we will have the call. We will make the decision. We will have our education. We are going to make education exciting again. I can't wait to hear my students say, "I love coming to school," and "I love that lesson you made." And one thing, I got 100 on that test because I have the best teacher in JCPS, Mr. Biggers. So I want to say thank you. And for the last time, as a Jefferson County Public School student, I am JCPS. We are JCPS.
Our next speaker is Don Booth.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Michael Hufford?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not a student, so...
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I called you. Once upon a time, we all been there, done that. Thank you.
You can tell by the hairline. Welcome. Board, Dr. Polio. My name is Michael Hufford, and thank you for your time to speak this evening. I come before you in regards to the performance of Dupont Manuel High School, where currently my sister has enrolled as a freshman. After watching the previous board meeting in which Dr. Polio spoke at length to the growing success of the county and current administration over the past 10 months, I decided to take a more granular level look at the performance, specifically that of Dupont Manuel High School. I believe you'll find handouts next to you. What I found through this research was that Dupont Manuel High School is the number-one public high school in Kentucky. Manuel has been a high-performing school for some time. However, it consistently increased its performance over the past five years, which has been the benchmark of the start of Principal Mays. The average ACT score has gone from an impressive 26 to an outstanding 28 in comparison to that of the district average of just 18.8. Manuel consistently has 10 times the number of national merit semifinalists compared to any other JCPS high school. That's not 10 more students; that's 10 times the students. Manuel has increased its scholarship funding by $30 million. Applications submitted to Manuel for enrollment are at a five-year high. Manuel has doubled the number of clubs offered to students to promote inclusivity and a sense of belonging for all students. Dupont has created a Manuel Achievement Center to provide all the resources necessary to ensure no student is left behind. Professionally, I'm an executive in the private sector, and I'm evaluated formally on a quarterly basis. I mention this because most of us are evaluated, judged, or critiqued. I mention this because most of us are evaluated, judged, or critiqued in some manner to ensure our level of output meets the given standard. The numbers I just spoke to, including those forthcoming, show the performance of Principal Mays and that of his staff are outperforming the given standards of success. Statistics I was able to gather from the comprehensive school survey directly reflect the performance of Manuel's administration. These surveys provide insights from both the perspective of Manuel's students and their parents. My research found that when Manuel's students were asked if their school provides a safe and secure environment, 97% of students and 99% of parents agreed with that statement consistently over the past five years. When parents were asked if they felt the principal of their child's school provides effective leadership, 93% of them agreed. When asked if they were satisfied with their school, 90% of students and 94% of parents agreed consistently over the past five years. I could go on and on with the statistics, but will simply put, Manuel continues to be a top of their game while significantly ahead of other JCPS high schools. DuPont Manuel High School is doing incredibly well, due in large part to the amazing job of the current administration. Great leaders do not set out to be a leader, they set out to make a difference. It's not about the role, but always about the goal. We all know the effect a great leader can have on a school or school district. I applaud Principal Mays, his four assistant principals, and all the administration on not only maintaining the caliber of DuPont Manuel High School, but increasing it consistently over the past five years. We should all be so lucky to have such leadership.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I'm not making any more mistakes and not calling up a student. Ms. Ashanti Scott, are you a student?
Yes.
Okay. Please forgive me, but I didn't go all the way down the list. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. All right, sorry. My name is Ashanti Scott, and I am a junior at Butler Traditional High School, and I'm addressing the board on a different and very important issue that has been introduced in response to the shooting at Marshall County High School that would arm teachers in our schools. This thought needs to be analyzed with a holistic approach. I think the students of color should be considered who will be targeted under this policy, and I think racial equity correlates with gun safety, and minorities must be thought about and acknowledged. This would decimate the safe climate that JCPS schools strive for, and I sure would not feel safe. Teachers already have a plethora of tasks that they do while in the classroom, and they do not need the burden of being a split-second judge, jury, and executioner. What about the teachers who might be considered the hostile shooter when a police storms a school? This idea fuels the school-to-prison pipeline and bestows a false sense of security. It is an unacceptable response to tragedy. There are a multitude of JCPS parents, students, and constituents who oppose this idea, and young people like me all across Kentucky who will be able to vote for the first time in November will remember who stood for us and who didn't. We marched for our lives, and now we march to the polls. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Our next speaker will be Sue Foster. Sue Foster, welcome, Ms. Foster. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm a little gun-shy. I was expecting a child to jump out and start singing or something, you know, it usually happens when I'm speaking. Good evening, Dr. Polio, and duly-elected and sworn JCPS board members. As president of JCA ESP Local 4011, a 24-year employee with JCPS, parent of a JCPS graduate, grandmother of two future JCPS students, I'm honored to come before you and support your dedication to our students, parents, educators, and taxpayers tonight. In our years with JCPS, we have witnessed the good, the bad, and the ugly that comes with any large school, district, organization, and/or corporation, but is with great pride that we can say without hesitation that the focus and vision for change and a new direction that has been and is coming from this democratically-elected school board and our new superintendent over the past 10 months is to be commended and recognized by all stakeholders, along with local, state, and federal agencies. As an elected member of over 6,000 of our fellow classified coworkers to serve on the superintendent's search committee, I was honored to be a part of the village that was working so diligently to serve over 100,000 students, our parents, our JCPS-certified classified employees, community members, and taxpayers. It was amazing to witness and participate in a process that truly did value and take into consideration all voices. We put our faith into you, our elected school board members, to recognize our concerns, to hear our voices, and to meet the needs of Jefferson County through the hiring of our new superintendent, Dr. Marty Polio. Through your authority as elected school board members, you heard the voices of the people, but also acted upon the call of the people and hired Dr. Polio to be the next leader of JCPS. We congratulate and thank you all for that decision. As residents of Jefferson County, Kentucky, we have witnessed the collaboration between Dr. Polio and our elected school board members rise to new heights. Over the past 10 months, we have seen a greater intent and focus on removing obstacles from the past and replacing them with a new direction that will provide our children with the highest quality education and provide a firmer foundation for the growth of the whole child. And tonight, we strongly recommend the district's commitment to the race and equity policy that supports all children. As a Jefferson County taxpayer, we applaud your work and dedication in being good stewards of our tax dollars in keeping JCPS financially sound and stable. As registered voters of Jefferson County, we give thanks daily for our elected officials that sit at this table, who give tirelessly of their time and are the eyes, ears, and voices of our parents, students, and employees in the times of our greatest turmoils and needs. In closing, we call upon the Kentucky Board of Education members to hear the voices of all JCPS stakeholders, to decry any attempt to strip Jefferson County voters the right to democracy, and to work with and assist our chosen leaders, parents, students, educators, and taxpayers by wrecking assistance, not a takeover.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Thank you for being here tonight. Our last three speakers, our last three speakers are Mr. Shelby Lanier, Pastor Jerry Stevenson, and Gay Edelman. Mr. Shelby Lanier, if you're here, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Let me say to all the members of the board, and some of you know that I have consistently come before the board, especially Diane Porter. I'm going to, and one of the young ladies addressed the thing that we have to address here and in this country. That is the problem of race. I'm 82 years old, and I am going to address it just like that young lady did. I am here this evening to oppose the political attempt by the state to take over control of our public schools in Jefferson County. Governor Matt Bevins is playing the race card with the African-American community and JCPS with his appointment of Reverend Milton Seymour and interim Commissioner Lewis. Governor Bevins knows what he is doing, and so do we. Pastor Jerry Stevenson has no religious right, constitutional right, or legal right to slander our superintendent, Mr. Martin Polio, by saying to this community that, quote, "Martin Polio is a racist bigot" on his radio program on radio station WLLV. I support this board, my elected board member on this board, Diane Porter, and I support the teachers and students of the Jefferson County Public School System. Dr. Polio and other elected school board members must be allowed to make improvements they began 10 years ago. We elected you. You were not appointed by the state governor or the city mayor. All of us in this room have the power to remove the governor or any of those representatives that are supposed to represent our best interest of us who live in Jefferson County. Governor Bevins and his hand-picked appointees don't have the authority to control us unless you allow them to do it. He knows better. I know better, and everyone of us in this room knows better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Pastor Stevenson, welcome, but let me say this. This is a challenging time that we will get through, but one of the things that I hear consistently is, let's be kind. And I cannot censor anybody that's talking, you're not talking about anybody at JCPS, but remember, the message is important, but let's be kind with our words, please. I'm not speaking to you personally, but it's getting to our last two speakers, and I just want to say that, welcome Pastor Stevenson. Thank you for being here.
Madam Chair, Dr. Polio, and to this board. As you know, a week ago, we stood, the Kentucky Pastors in Action Coalition held a press conference here, providing our support to the state for taking over the management of this organization. We felt it was important that you personally hear from us, and that's why I, as the operating officer for the Kentucky Pastors in Action Coalition, is here to address you and to share with you why we believe that's necessary. I first started coming to this board in 2009. I shared with you this board, and unfortunately, you were not here, but we shared with you the 2008 audit, as well as the national review by the Fordham Foundation. And it talked to you about this board and this community about the issue of why it's this board and this institution is not educating our students of color and low-income children. And it cited that 2008 Kentucky audit, as well as the Fordham Institute cited the relationship that this board has with the collective bargaining agreement. That is no secret that I have never kept a secret with Dr. Polio nor Chair Porter. It is that document that we believe is the greatest hindrance to the education of our children of color. The State's Office of Education Accountability describes the collective bargaining agreement between JCPS and the teachers' union as being the most comprehensive and cumbersome in the state. Comprehensive and cumbersome means the administrator's hands are tied when it comes to implementing policy that results in the best, most experienced teachers being placed in the lowest-performing schools. While the union claims it no longer stands in the way of placing the seniority in failing schools, it opposes allowing the district to offer financial incentives for great teachers. We do have great teachers, and I believe that. But until this board has the courage to address this issue, I haven't been back before this board since 2013, and the reason is because I don't believe this board is listening when it comes to the real dynamic problem that you're faced with. I'm going to make this available to Dr. Polio because we don't have anything to hide, and I know I'm not popular, but I'm not here. I'm here to talk about this 81% of low-income children in my neighborhood who cannot read in the fourth grade. That's who I'm speaking for.
Thank you, Pastor Stevenson, for being here, and thank you for providing the information for Dr. Polio. Our last speaker for the evening... Our last speaker for the evening is Gay Edelman. Ms. Edelman, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Superintendent Polio, Chair Porter, and the rest of the JCPS board. I came with a different speech prepared, but I would be remiss if I did not address the previous speaker's statements. The first time he spoke to you was in 2009, and clearly that is not the same board or the same administration. Tonight is a perfect example of the racial equity policy that is being passed, that this is a different board and a different time and a different climate. The union document is not what ties our district's hands. It's state law. It's the main reason I'm running for state senate. I want to get in there and change the state laws that affect our, tie our district's hands, tie our superintendent's hands, tie our board's hands. We talk about, he mentioned the greatest hindrance. There are so many laws that tie our hands and make this an adult-centered game instead of what's best for students, and you can't blame the adults for focusing on meeting goals and competing with schools across town when some schools get to choose their students and some don't. The seniority of teachers is, my son graduated from the academy at Shawnee, and I've seen what happens at a school with high turnover. And what we need to be doing is providing supports and resources and accolades and kudos to the teachers that work in those schools, not continually berate them and drag them down because they can't keep up and perform with the highest-performing school across town, such as Manuel, as they mentioned before. Manuel's achievements are incredible, but it's not just because of what's going on in the school, but it's because they have the ability to choose the students that attend there, and then a school like Shawnee doesn't. So let's look at the tribunal process and what forces our district to keep teachers that probably should not be in classrooms. That's something that we can change at the state legislative level. Again, he mentioned he hasn't been back since 2013, and so, again, I rest my case about this not being the same board that it used to be. I wanted to talk about student assignment and the wolf being at the door and things that we can do, possibly even before the next board meeting, that will allow us to mitigate some of the damages should we be faced with a state takeover. Again, at Shawnee, my son, my class, my son's, on the first day of school, I still have 30 seconds, right? I'm sorry, I lost my script, so I'm just trying to keep track of time. On the first day of school, we see 100 students that are showing up at Shawnee. That's where they want to attend, but because Shawnee, the West End, is where the student assignment plan, really, the nexus of the student assignment plan begins, we turn students away. We need to, if we want to talk about equity, let's not place all of the burden of diversity on one segment of society. Let's share that burden. Let's be that compassionate city and work towards recruiting magnetically students like my son who want to attend schools from the East End to the West End and share that burden equitably, remove the...
Ms. Edelman?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but, you know, I said at the very beginning, we're going to have to stick to the three minutes. Thank you. You're welcome to come back at any time.
I will email you what my original script was.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. That completes our speakers. We're going to move on quickly with our agenda. A lot of our guests that are here this evening are, who have spoken on the racial equity policy. I know you want us to move forward with that vote as quickly as possible, and we will do so as quickly as possible. So moving on with the agenda, we have two action items for this evening, and for that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Polio, who will introduce the action items for us. Again, please let us, board and others, let us move forward as quickly as possible so we can get to the consent calendar for the items that many people came to witness this evening. evening. Dr. Polio.
Thank you, Chair Porter and board members. We will, once again, I will do both the presentation for the approval of job descriptions and org charts at one time, and then you may take two separate votes on that in order to pass it. Is the third board meeting that we have brought to you changes to our organizational chart? This is much less substantial, much smaller in nature. Most of it is cleaning up some of the things that we've needed to. We're adding a couple of jobs and making a few minor changes. But we are at the end of the major reorganization that we have really brought to you. The Council of Great City Schools brought a recommendation. You know our priorities from the very beginning: improve culture and climate, increase student learning, improve organizational coherence. We have done the heavy lifting and the work on this. As I said, all the jobs that you have approved, we have probably interviewed 40 people over the past several days. So, we are working hard to get a top-notch team onboard as we move forward in our reorganization. So, we are at the last steps. We might have a few more as we move forward, but we are at the last steps of getting our organizational chart very reflective of what the Council of Great City Schools recommended to us. We have followed that as a map, a roadmap from the beginning, and will be, we have a few changes from it, but in the end, we are now very close to what they recommended. You know that team came in. Phase one was in the March and April board meetings, or one and two, I'm sorry. Reorganized the cabinet. We aligned the departments per the recommendations. Better to support schools and increase student learning. Very excited about what we did there. Now, we're at phase three. We're adding a couple of last positions, changing some reporting relationships to improve that coherence, making a few corrections, changes, titles, salary grades. That's where we are right now. So, a few of the changes that you will see. As was recommended by the Council of Great City Schools, a additional person to this will be the Director of Internal Audits, which has been an external role for an internal audit that we have actually contracted out. We want to bring that back in. That was the recommendation. Will report directly to me, but will obviously have a close relationship with our Board of Education and, most importantly, our new audit team that will work. So, best practice to do this. Move our auditors, our current three auditors, from our CFO to this Director of Internal Audit. So, it really provides oversight on what we want to do and away from the way it's been. We think it's by far, along with the Council of Great City Schools, the best way to go. The clerk is coming with that person, too. Couple of others, small changes, moving the Supervisor of Attendance Systems Data and Data Control Student Records to the Director of Pupil Personnel. That is just cleaning up the relationship. No major changes there. We are adding, recommending one additional resource teacher for ESL and Academics. Transition readiness, which you had already approved as Specialist Two. We're adding, and this is just to correct an error from last year, a placement specialist for ECE. We are also adding, which was a recommendation, a Government and Community Relations Full-Time Person, which I think is very much needed in our current situation. We will most likely bring to you a reduced external contract for that work, so that work will become internal. In both of those roles that we're adding today, we have a substantial external contract that we would like to reduce and have those people internal, which is recommendation. You see a few other minor changes, moving a Secretary Three to the Director of Human Resources and move Support Services Aid to the Chief of Human Resources from Chief Operations, cleaning up some of the reporting that I said before. Couple other small things there that you can see. Coordinator of Support Services is moving, and then a Specialist Two is moving to Chief Equity Officer from Personnel Recruitment and Staffing and adding one Field Service Engineer. So, mostly minor cleanup changes. The two additional spots that I'd highlight that are major are that additional of the adding the Director of Internal Audit and then adding that Executive Administrator, Government, and Community Relations, which correlate with a reduced contract. Next steps, we are reviewing the management audit findings to make sure that we align with this. We will have, we are beginning a process of looking at our grades and how we are aligned, job grades and classifications all across this district. We might bring you some more from Central Office, but we'd like our Chief of Human Resources to be onboard to really drive that work on the next changes. So, we are essentially at the end of the road for the major changes. We will continue this work to make sure that we are best aligned with efficiency. I'll take any questions or comments that you have.
Ms. Duncan. And then Ms. Horn.
Okay. I just have a, I know I'm going to support this, but I just want to remember that we had been directed to have internal audit be an independent kind of thing, not under the superintendent, but as an independent kind of thing that reported and worked with the board. So, it was kind of our way of getting oversight that checked what internal was doing. And so, I just want to, I mean, I'm hesitant on that one, but I will support it, but I did want to remind us that that was a recommendation that we had from another audit that said, "Bring that out."
So, I would say if you asked our external, internal auditors, they have recommended this. They have recommended this. Now, without the audit committee, then I would agree with that. But with an audit committee that you have established two board meetings ago, then that is the recommendation of the Council of Great City Schools. That provides a layer of oversight that is best practice across this country. So, I would agree with you in the context of the way this organization used to be, but in the way the organization currently is. This is our best step forward.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Horn.
I just want to say how excited I am to see the audit, Director of Audit. And I think that having the Board Audit Committee up and running, I look forward to status update on that as soon as possible, you know, to get those folks named. I know that, I think that's in the works, because I do share the concern of Ms. Duncan, just to want to make sure that in the charter for the Board Audit Committee, while legally, our attorney advises, you know, we have two employees, we have an attorney, and we have a superintendent that we hire. We don't hire an internal audit under state law, so it is going to be serving under Dr. Polio, but with the strength of the Board Audit Committee. It's exciting to see what the possibilities will be. My question is, just to make sure that the director relationship of the, I guess I'll say, the level of the salary and experience level seems in the field of a Director of Audit, based on the job description, that it would require somebody with much more experience than just three years and at that salary level of 113. So, I just wanted to just, you know, ask the question. I don't need an, you know, I'm just a little concerned that that level and experience level...
Well, I would say, first of all, that, yes, that's a minimum job experience, but it is really what we do with all of the positions we are posting is to align a minimum job experience. That is not saying that's what we would hire, but I think we have to become much more aligned. We have jobs all across the Central Office that vary in experience and job grade and classification, and we are trying to align that very closely. So, that is the minimum. I would expect more, too, out of that. On the second point, I would remind our board that we will still keep a contract with Dean Dorton, so that is not that we are eliminating that position. And clearly, we have to set up a system where the Director of Audit, Internal Audits, would have the authority and the power to question me or to submit any concerns about anything that I were to do, which would hopefully be none, but has that authority to do that. So, that's why they have to be, have the ability to step outside and have a committee to go to.
Other questions, comments?
Okay. I will accept a motion to receive the recommendation for the approval of job descriptions. Motion by Ms. Horn, seconded by Dr. Cole. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. I will now receive a motion to approve recommendation for the approval of the organizational charts. Recommendation by Dr. Willner, seconded by Dr. Cole. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I have gotten several texts from my colleagues up here about moving on the racial equity policy. So, we can accept a motion to bring the whole consent calendar forward and do that before we do the information items, if there are motion to do so. Board Member Geese, seconded by Board Member Willner. All those in favor? Okay. At this time, I am going to ask for a vote on the Consent Calendar Except Item 11K. And 11K has to do with Recommendation for Approval of Assistant Treasurers for Bank and Signature Resolution. So, by accepting a motion for the Consent Calendar that will include the racial equity policy, all those in favor of making that motion to accept the Consent Calendar minus that one item? And I think we got the motion and the second, right? All those in favor of accepting the Consent Calendar at this time? Wait a minute. Ms. Duncan, are you unclear?
Are we not? You don't want any other item to talk about? You just, the one that's already been mentioned, there's...
The only one that I was told that had been pulled down was 11K. Do you have something to pull down?
I can use it. I can, I can use that information a little later.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion and we have a second to approve the Consent Calendar. Am I correct? Am I in the right world? Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous that we have accepted the Consent Calendar. Thank you. I want to quickly, I know, thank you for the applause, but let me quickly say that this has been successful because of the direct directions from our superintendent, from the work of the Diversity, Equity, Poverty Office, from the guidance of this Board of Education. And on the Board of Education, Dr. Cole served on the Ad-Hoc Committee. And I know that there may be some committee members here in the room that worked on the Ad-Hoc Committee, which was a long-term process. So, I'm going to try to pull your names up, so I just want to say your names, because it's important that they get recorded in the record this evening for the work that you have done. So, if you bear with me for just a minute. The committee members are Autumn Nagley, who is our 15th District PTA President, Dr. Chris Cole, Dana Jackson. Ms. Jackson, would you please stand up so we can recognize you? Thank you for being here tonight. Darrell Unsell. Autumn, thank you for standing up. Denise Clayton, Felix Garza, Frank Mellon, our General Counsel, served on that committee. Thank you, Mr. Mellon. James Hughley from JCTA, Kelly Watson, Michelle Foster, Patty Cannapple, Rashad Abdul-Raman, and Shelley Thomas. And there were student representatives, and as you recall, we had a work session, and the students from the Black Student Union from Farm Creek were here. So, having said that, now could we have a round of applause? Thank you. This is indeed a historic evening. For those that have been here to be with us, to walk this journey, thank you for walking with us. Don't hang up your shoes. We've got a longer road to travel, so we appreciate your support, but we cannot do it without you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all that you have done. I know I'm not supposed to talk about prayers, but here we go. Thank you for your prayers. Thank you for your support, and thank you for being here for the children of the Jefferson County Public Schools. Thank you very much. I'm going to move on with the work before y'all get mad at me and say she's lost track. Thank you. So, on the item, on the Consent Calendar, Item K that has been pulled down, all those in favor of Item K, I will read that once again so we're clear. It's a Recommendation for Approval of Assistant Treasurers and Bank Signature Resolution for Fiscal Year 2018-19. All those that are in favor of that item, would you pli... Oh, I'm sorry. I do need a motion. Motion by Mr. Brady, seconded by Dr. Cole. All those in favor? Everyone's, Ms. Duncan, Mr. Geese, Dr. Cole, Brady, Willner, Porter opposed and abstention. Ms. Horn abstains to that. Thank you very much. So, we will now go back to our information items. Dr. Polio.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we are going to bring you the information item for acceptance of the 1819 Student Progression Promotion Grading Handbooks for a First Reading. And I brought, let's see, Dr. Coleman and Dr. Smith will be coming to the table to present. Once you see, your five-minute time begins now.
We got it. We got it.
All right. Shot clock's, shot clock's running.
All right. Dr. Smith? You go right ahead.
Okay. Well, move quickly. This is an annual item for you all for approval. I want to thank the team that's worked on this with me and Dr. Coleman, who are in the audience. Pam Royster, Chris Berba, and Christine Deely. And in addition to our colleagues with JCTA, we have jumped right in and made some additions in partnership with the committees that work on this work. So, I'm going to move through fairly quickly. Just to give you a brief overview, I don't think this is working. There we go. The process for updating the SPPNG document year-to-year is that we have specific teams by grade level that represent teachers, counselors, administrators, and other central staff. We also have feedback sessions. Once the review of that work is accomplished, we have feedback sessions. We had several this year where we had a few individuals in attendance, not quite the feedback representation that we wanted, but we did get quite a few people who were here. And we also reached out to JCTA to include teachers and get additional teacher feedback. And then, that's how we came up with the proposed changes for this year's SPPNG document. Overall, there were very minimal changes this year. Fortunately, I stepped into this work six months ago, where all the major changes had been made the previous year. So, this year was fairly easy at the recommendations that we have proposed. First, we had to make changes to the writing portfolios, given the state regulations. We also made changes to added language that we needed to include across elementary middle and high to create coherence in the documents. Another that we made were changes that we needed to include for EL language and grading appeals, that I know we had one question about earlier. And then, more specifically, at the high school level, there were just a few additional changes that we needed to make in relationship to what's happening at the state level and modifying our documents to be in compliance and coherence with that as well. So, with that said, we'll pause, because really, those are the minimal changes that were made to this year's SPPNG document. We do anticipate next year there being more significant changes so that we can match the vision of the district and where we're headed in implementing deeper learning. So, we will anticipate and get started with that work as early as next month.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Chair. I've got a question regarding the handbooks and the way that parents are informed about their rights. And one of the concerns that I had sent and mailed off to Dr. Polio, and I assume to you guys as well, was basically if we can include language that would say something along the lines of the process for resolving grading concerns or other issues, this could not just necessarily be restricted to... not just necessarily be restricted to grading concerns, but this is the one, example I'm picking. The process for resolving grading concerns shall be communicated to the parent slash guardian upon the first formal notification of a concern, or as is said, words to that effect. And I know your response was, you know, that you agree that this is best practice and we can explore ways to include this in policy in the future. My question is, why not within the next time that this is brought before the board? Because that's the purpose of having a first and second reading.
Yeah.
What's preventing us, what's preventing us from doing that?
Well, nothing's preventing us from it. Remember, it's policy and it's going to have to match. I think we're going to have to get some input from our partners with teachers and JCTA because we're going to have to also match with that what happens if that doesn't happen and what does at first. I mean, we don't disagree at all, but I think the language on that, the policy on that is going to be, have to be discussed on what that means to be, you know, I can't remember your exact wording that you just said, but so I-
I'm not married to that wording.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's something that we all agree definitely needs, needs to be enhanced. But I think there's going to have to be significant discussion around it. And that doesn't mean that we can't bring to you changes even a month or two from now to that. But I think that's going to have to be a part of a process too.
I do know that some, there is a concern about this being published and making sure that the most up-to-date policy is actually out there and is, you know, materials production has the chance to be able to get that to everyone. My greater concern is that parents are having to keep up with more and more every single day, and this is a fairly thick policy book. And yeah, we may sign off on it, but it doesn't necessarily mean we always remember it when we go back into it. So parents in particular, I have a concern that if they're knee-deep in something and then they let something slide and then someone comes back and says, oh, well, wait a minute, did you had, there was this timeframe that you didn't, that you didn't adhere to. I think it's really incumbent upon us to inform the parents of their process.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms., Dr. Willner?
This may not be a fair question, given that we just passed the racial equity policy, but in, in the major revisions that we're talking about next year, do you have thoughts that this is going to be one of the policies that's going to need to be significantly revised in order-
Absolutely.
Could, maybe, could you say just a little bit about that?
I will. Thank you.
You're over your time limit. Go ahead.
You know, clearly, the more equitable policy is a standards-based approach, especially to grading, where, you know, the onus on proficiency, instead of being always on the student, turns towards the school, the teacher, the processes within the school. That often what must happen is multiple attempts at proficiency and then the student being provided whatever interventions are necessary in order to make sure that they get what is needed, which can include multiple assessments, less timeframes around when a student has to complete something. So I think there's really going to have to be a commitment to more of a standards-based approach, which is very difficult. But, but that has to be the movement, that it's not necessarily about when a student does it and, but instead that they end up getting it and doing it. And so I think we're going to have to really be committed to looking at different ways of not only providing instruction and intervention, but also grading and assessing students.
Thank you.
That cover it? Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to receive the 2018-19 Student Progression Promotion and Grading Handbooks for the first reading? Motion by Ms. Horn, seconded by Board Member Geese. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Our next item, Dr. Polio, is the acceptance of the Head Start Monthly Program Report. If you could start that for us, please.
Sure, I think you guys just get to stay there, right? You're, you're kind of there for the evening. Come on up. So we are having our Head Start Monthly Report Corrective Action Plan. I will turn it over to the team there. And Raina, appreciate you joining us. Take it away.
Okay. I will be brief, Dr. Polio.
Thank you.
We, this is the quarterly update that, based on our corrective action plan and upon the request of the Board of Education, we are providing you. We outlined some strategies that have been implemented in this first quarter of the year. And I just want to highlight three particular things that I think have been the most impactful. One is the trauma-informed self-care training that was highly received by over 700 instructional staff that was trained in that. And there was so much positive feedback from that, that as a matter of fact, we heard folks say this should be a recommendation across the board for all JCPS staff because self-care is the beginning of being able to function well in a healthy manner in the classroom, and that benefits the kids. A second strategy, of course, you've heard about before, is the step-away tap-out system that we actually designed in response to the situation that we were in. And the step-away is actually a procedure whereby staff members are actually encouraged to step away from a situation that is becoming difficult or even tap out of the classroom in order to get support from their colleagues and their administrator. So to clarify, this is purely a supportive system, one that has been sorely needed. And again, it was well-received by the over 700 instructional staff that we trained. And lastly, we, we have midpoint data from the snapshot observations that we've conducted around safety and, and active supervision. We did data collection in the fall and we did data collection in the, in the winter, and we will do one again at the end of the year. And we saw increases across the board on all 18 indicators. Some of them increased more than others, but that was due to the hard work of targeted coaching based on the data. And so we were able to differentiate support, change our model of coaching, and differentiate the support for each classroom based on what they needed. Allowed us to collaborate with administrators along, based on the data as well. So that has also led to a almost 11 percentage point gain from just in, in a couple of months, from really the fall to the winter. So I'm going to stop there and see-
And I would like to add one thing that we are committed to doing that we have found is a definite need going into this that I didn't know. Whatever we have to do, that every classroom for preschool, early childhood, has a certified teacher. And that is different than the Head Start model, but we have to be committed to doing that. And we will be committed to presenting a plan to you that will have every teacher being certified, just like every other classroom in JCPS.
Questions or comments? Ms. Duncan, Ms. Horn, and Dr. Willner, please.
Rena, if stepaways and written reflections aren't required to be reported on beyond our, our particular district, what does have to be reported beyond? Because it talks about self-reporting. And then when you self-report, it sounds like that that's something that probably needs to go on, or does it not? What, what needs to go on to the regional office?
So the step-away tap-out system is designed to be used, you know, in the regular course of work in order to preempt situations that cause employees duress and therefore may cost them to cross the line, in other words, and, and do things that they would otherwise not do. And so it's a preemptive measure, really. The, the, what we are required to report beyond JCPS and our system is the incidents that, the allegations. Those are the only things that are required to be reported.
The actual allegations of having crossed the line?
Yes.
Okay.
And we will err on the side of reporting, I can assure you of that.
Okay. I didn't want, I didn't want to say one thing. You know, I've heard the mayor express support for, you know, for us and, and not for a takeover. But in that report, he also talks about our, something that catches their attention, I think, in, in the audit, or, or something that they, he thinks catches the attention, and that's our, about 50% kindergarten-ready rate and, and assigning that to Jefferson County schools. But you're, the total number of students that we touch for pre-kindergarten is just about 40% instead of, I mean, we aren't, we don't teach all of the kids who are getting ready to go into kindergarten. And, but that perception keeps flowing out there that we're teaching all the kids and it's, it's our responsibility to make all of them kindergarten-ready when we only touch about, I don't even know if it's 40%. Is this number dropping here on the, on the Head Start? I saw the 13, I mean, the number that we got was 13-something. Is that a-
That, no, that is our funded enrollment for Head Start, 1319 is-
Okay.
Yes, we are required to, to stay at that funded enrollment.
Okay. So it's not-
That's specifically the Head Start funded, but our entire early childhood program serves over 3,500 students.
And, but that's-
Some of it is, is state preschool.
Right. And some of it is below preschool, some of it's younger than preschool, though, younger than the pre-kindergarten.
That's, that's the early Head Start, yes.
Right.
Ms. Horn, Dr. Willner, and then I'll go back to Ready for K. Ms. Horn, Dr. Willner?
I wanted to thank you for including all of the attachments, so I could read them from the, the meeting, from the meetings. So I, I thank you, and I'd like to, I, I just want to hopefully continue to get all those each month because it was very helpful. I, I just wanted to make sure that I did express my concern publicly about the health and safety violations. I see marked improvement, we, we do, in, in pretty much everything, but that level of health and safety violations is just really high. Can you explain it a little bit so just I can understand it more? Not having children in the program and being kind of removed from it, but I would like to understand it.
So that's indicator 14 on, on that tool, the snapshot tool. And that particular indicator on health and safety includes a multitude of factors. And it's an all-or-nothing indicator. It's one of those that's like, you know, everything in the basket. So it can be, it, it can include very serious things, but it can also, and very often includes things like a missing poster, a teacher or a staff member leaving their purse on the table, according to Head Start standards, that's a safety violation. A plastic bag that they brought their lunch in, out, that's a safety violation. So there's, there's a lot of things that can trigger a no in that indicator. That's not to say that any one of those, of those things are not important, they are all important, only to explain that there are many ways that, that you can fail. And you have to meet all of those indicators in order to get a yes. So it's something that we continuously work on with monitoring and support and education, 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 so that we are not lax, we continue to be vigilant.
Yep. And then my last question is, on the self-assessment, I know that governance was included in the self-assessment. So I'm just not sure about the process because this is new for me, but are we going to be participating in the governance part of the self-assessment? Or is, you know, how, how will we, you know, because we are the three-part govern, you know, one of the three parts of governance.
Yes. So the self-assessment process, we discussed that with the board in January and invited the board members to participate in that. I know a lot has been going on. And we actually provided a training date for, for that. And we had policy council members involved in that as well, in, in the whole self-assessment process. And we will be bringing the data to you, I believe, at the next board meeting on, on the results of that. And of course, we continue to work on program monitoring and, and assessing where we are. And we will continue to invite the Board of Education to be a part of that process as we move forward.
I guess I just, next year, I guess, I didn't understand that there was a scheduled date that the Board of Education was invited to attend. Do you know what I'm saying? Like on our calendaring? So I, I guess probably, I, my feedback would just be, yeah, I just didn't understand that that was when I was supposed to be there because it said training, but I thought it was like a self-assessment. I didn't know that was called, like a training. So anyway, it just wasn't clear to me because I would have been there and I wanted to participate.
Thank you.
Dr. Willner?
I want to commend you on the ongoing improvements and the work of your staff. The early childhood piece, as we all know, is so important and it's the foundation of everything. So I really just want to lift up your department and, and what you do. I'm really encouraged by the focus on self-care. And I, this is another one of those kind of unfair questions. And if, it's okay if you don't have an answer right now, but as our students are increasingly impoverished and our students are increasingly traumatized, and as our students are, higher and higher percentage of our students are experiencing racial oppression and the trauma that goes with that, it makes teaching much harder. It makes being a classroom assistant much harder. And so we've got children coming in traumatized, we've got secondary trauma with teachers. And is there a plan to, the self-care piece, to expand that up, up the chain? Is that something that's being talked about?
So that's a great question. We actually do quite a bit of that now through Dr. Everett's department. We, you know, we provide that kind of support for teachers and staffs in schools. We need to continue to expand it. We're learning more about the effects of trauma on adults who work with children who have experienced trauma. So we know we're going to have to continue to, to do more of that.
Okay. I just want to make a statement, it's not a question. I'm consistently talking about the importance of getting kids ready for kindergarten and whatever number we're serving. If that's not all of them, it's not enough. We know that our kids need more help. I do not believe, subscribe to the philosophy to letting them catch up in time because while they're catching up in time, they're losing something else. So it's not a question, it's a statement, and I'm probably being timed with my statement and I'm getting ready to run out of time. But I want it on the record, our kids need Ready for K. They need that, that, and we are doing the best we can based on the funding that we have, some of which is from private entities, but it's important. It makes a difference. All students should start on point when school starts. Not a question, not an answer. I'm out of time. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments before I call for the motion? I've said that a million times and I'm going to keep saying it as long as I can. So is there a motion to receive the Head Start Monthly Program Report and Corrective Action Plan and Quarterly Update? Motion by Ms. Horn, seconded by Board Member Geese. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on, Dr. Polio, to the National Assessment and Educational Progress Trial Urban District Assessment.
Thank you. The NAEP results will have been reported publicly. You have gotten those, but we did want to give a brief update. And I think you will find from the data that it will underscore the importance of the racial equity plan that we just passed because of the significance of our gaps in NAEP results, which are reading and math grades four and eight. So we have a lot of work to do without question, but I'll let Dina cover those briefly.
Great. Okay. So want to begin by sharing the results and a high-level summary of our 2017 NAEP results. We have participated as a district in NAEP since, as part of TUDAS, which is the Trial Urban District Assessment, since 2009. So this is several iterations in, in terms of our performance. We have about 4,600 students that participate in fourth and eighth grade in reading and math. It involves about 58 elementary schools and 24 middle schools. As a nation, there are now 27 urban districts participating in the NAEP assessment as part of the Trial Urban District Assessment. And in general, what we see as our results for 2017 are that they remain steady from 2015. We just held steady in both reading and math across grade levels. We also like to compare ourselves to the large-city average of those 27 districts. And overall, what we see is that we're higher performing in fourth grade reading and on par in eighth grade reading, while our math is a little bit lower in terms- and on par in eighth-grade reading, while our math is a little bit lower in terms of performance. We're on average with our large-city district in fourth-grade math, but we're significantly below the large-city average in eighth-grade math. Math, sorry. Also, what we find is, as Dr. Polio mentioned, a need for improving in terms of closing the achievement gap among our students. We did have a nice shout-out from Michael Casserly, the executive director of Council of Great City Schools, that said that he is encouraged by the, our direction in Jefferson County and is very optimistic about our future, and that we're already making reforms and improvements that are necessary to improve our student outcomes. And so what you see on the screen now, it's a very, lot of information on this chart, so I'll just try to break it down for you. You'll see grade four reading on the first column, grade eight reading, grade four math and grade eight math. And what we see overall, again, Jefferson County only has three districts that are performing above us in reading and four in eighth grade in reading, a little bit lower for math, but still have quite a few districts performing below us in comparison with the rest of the nation in these areas. When we look at our achievement scores by student group, you'll see that we're moving not in the right direction. While we didn't see any statistically significant decreases except for our African-American students in grade four math, there was a significant drop there, a nine-point drop there for our grade four math. African-American, we see that our white students made gains in most areas where we didn't see gains in all of our other, for our African-American, Hispanic in reading. We did see some gains in math, and our free and reduced lunch students, we saw drops. So again, the gap is widening, and so I think that really speaks to the need for really digging in to this information and looking at our, how our racial equity policy can help us work on this issue. When we break it down in a little bit more descriptive terms, what you can see, this is our reading item map, and for grade four on the left, grade eight on the right, and what we see is that our white students in Jefferson County are performing just below proficient, where our black students are performing just below basic in reading. And so you can kind of see that gap by skill level when you look at it this way. Similar pattern with math. In grade four, our white students are performing two points below proficient, where our black students are performing right above basic, and then in grade eight math, you can see that our white students are quite a bit below proficient and our black students are below basic. So eighth-grade math is clearly an area that we need to drill down and do a deeper dive in terms of what kinds of analysis and what kind of learning support that we can provide. So we are currently working with JCPS Teaching and Learning Department to review the results. When our department goes up to receive the results, we also take a staff member from Teaching and Learning so that they can look at the results, have conversations with other curriculum directors from across the nation. We're collaborating, we need to collaborate across departments to share resources so that we can provide targeted support for specific populations. We have shared the results at Instructional Cabinet and talked about their implications there. We are able to use a lot of the NAEP resources to really target and support instructional planning, so one of the areas that we're looking into is that there's a survey that NAEP conducts with our teachers around instruction, learning environment, and so we have taken a few of the other districts that tend to score high, Guilford County, Austin, Miami, and do a deep dive to see what types of learning support systems they have in place that might help inform where we need to go in our district.
And I will conclude by saying, first of all, you know, first step is acknowledging these issues, and I think that's a part of our policy we passed tonight, but second of all, when we bring you our transition continuum at our next meeting and really our backpack of skills, that is where our intense and laser-like focus on literacy and numeracy will be powerful. I mean, we really have to look at what kids are taught, when they are taught it, how we identify students who are not where they need to be, what we provide to them additionally in support, in regards to interventions in the classroom, interventions outside of the classroom during the school day, and extending the school day. But until we have a laser-like focus on literacy and numeracy, which is going to be an enormous part of our backpack of skills, we won't see these moves. But when we do that, we will see this move and things will change positively.
Questions or comments? Ms. Duncan?
You know, I've often wondered the impact of, at the middle school level, a lot of times our parents opt out of us for the middle school time and go to private schools and do something else because they're worried about middle school, and then they come back. I've often wondered if that might help explain that dip that we experience at that level, and I don't know the numbers. I mean, I'm just wondering if the number of eighth-grade students, how that looks compared to the number going in, I mean, if that's a significant number or not. But I've often wondered that, if that exit for middle school has an impact on those scores, because those kids usually are the, are ones that are producing good scores and they leave for three years. So, I don't know, I'd just like to check that out sometime. I did notice, I asked about the gaps and how we compared to other districts and the size of our gaps among these groups, and the size of our gaps are really essentially about the same. I think our Hispanic students do better, there's less of a gap with our Hispanic students than other large districts, but it was, it's interesting to see those gaps being very similar in those other group categories that you had. But the thing is, we're not satisfied with that, and we want to work on that. So at least we know we're not, we're not an anomaly. Other districts are facing the same kind of issues.
Other comments or questions? I just want to go back and review some conversations that I've had with Dr. Polio as it pertains to students that need more help and the decisions that this board will have to make as we move forward with our budgeting. It is hurtful to me to hear that students in the district that I represent do not read. They do read, it depends on what test you're looking at. We are paying attention to the students all over Jefferson County, but I'm going to speak to West Louisville, where I have lived all of my life, and this board is not sitting here and allowing our students to not learn. So when the time comes that we have to make a decision to do things differently, more money, more whatever, I expect the board to move forward. This racial equity policy will give us the background for that, but I would ask those that talk about what is to come visit a school, not for five minutes, not for fifteen minutes, but to come spend some time in the school. You will see what our kids are learning, you will see the challenges that they face on a daily basis. So I won't say that I am sick and tired of being sick and tired, but I want folks to know that we are representing. I represent this district every day, I am proud to be the school board member for District One, and I am tired of people talking about what my kids cannot do. That's not a question, that doesn't deserve an answer. That's for the minutes, please, I just want to go on record because it's hurtful to hear when you know better, and for those that accuse us of not doing, show up and spend some time in the schools, that's all I've got to say about that. So there are no other questions about this, so are we ready to our motion for the, to receive the results of the NAEP Urban Assessment? Ms. Horn, seconded by Dr. Cole, all those in favor, motion passes unanimously, thank you so much. I would ask that my comments go in the minutes, though, for when I'm not here anymore as a board member, they will know that I did try to do my job. Thank you. Moving on to the acceptance of the quarterly report of KD audit, Dr. Polio.
Thank you. In the face of everything going on, we want to continue with our corrective action plans and our progress reports to you, so you know that we are working. This goes to the original corrective action plan and report from late September, where we are focused on career and technical education, IDEA, and safe crisis management. So I'll turn it over to the team.
Great, so I will start us off by just giving you a high-level review of where we are in that process, and then what we'd like to do on the next few progress reports is to take a little bit of a deeper dive into each of the areas, and so Kristi Rogers is here to talk a little bit about our corrective action plan and the great things that are going on with the CTE and college and career readiness. So just to bring us back to where we were, the last time we reported on our progress on the CAP was in February. Since that time, KDE has conducted a few other monitoring visits. Dr. Polio, at the March principal meeting, took quite a bit of time, I think it was more than five minutes...
It was.
...to provide, to provide guidance to our school leaders around the corrective action plan and really emphasize the importance of improving our systems in this work. And so we're here tonight to talk a little bit about our improvement systems in these three areas around the CAP, the CTE, IDEA, and restraints and seclusion. So in general, we did identify, and most of our work over the last several months since we received this report in September, was around strengthening those systems and creating written procedures and protocols, providing professional development, conducting data analysis to check on reporting fidelity, providing individual support to schools, and collaborating with the Kentucky Department of Education. During one of the last monitoring visits, we talked about in the future maybe setting up our meetings so that we're analyzing a program or a problem of practice and really taking a deeper dive into particular issues. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on the improvement strategies in this quarter because we're going to hear from Kristi, particularly around CTE, but you'll see both in the area of safe crisis management and IDEA, there's been additional training and guidance provided to our schools through our central office, and we provide regular updates every week at Instructional Cabinet, and again, focused in on those key takeaways from our March principal meeting. So with that, I will turn it over to Kristi Rogers.
Thank you. On the bottom slide, you'll see that in the letter we've received from KDE, the CTE office, their opening quote was, "The district has made great improvements in data quality this school year." So it's a complex system of data collection, a lot of it's done manually, but we've put in significant improvement strategies to get it done, and that was the opening line in the letter, which gives us promise we're on the right track. So just to give a deep dive on where we are, the first big strand was improving TED's data. We are doing weekly desk audits, which we mimic exactly what KDE does. That means we open up a student transcript physically and a schedule, and we audit that to make sure we've entered five data points correctly in a TED's database system, that's Technical Education Database. It's federal reporting for Perkins Funding, so it's how many credit hours, how many seat time, whether exploring or preparatory, it's about five pieces of data on each student, about seventeen thousand students with five points. It's all still done manually, a lot of room for error there. So we're literally desk auditing them weekly. We have, working on some ad hoc reports that helps the school run them quicker. When a student drops a class, fails a class, we have to adjust that data. Training, training, training at every level, so all stakeholders understand what kind of data goes in there. Traditionally, CTE's been done with maybe one person in the building's handled it, we need more stakeholders understanding. Cleaning up our pathways will help a lot, we have a lot of electives and not a clean four-course sequence, so as academies and other schools clean up those pathway sequences, it'll help. And then there's some very obscure rules, and you'll see, we've got a top-ten data entry rules to try to help clean up. The state changes a pathway, it changes how you count it. Some classes can count this year and not count next year, or you can count this class and this class, or this class, not this class. Lot of subtleties to CTE TED's data, we're trying to just build compliance and understanding with the entry of that. Second is pathway accuracy. We have one-hundred-and-sixty-nine career pathways in our district, one-hundred-and-sixty-nine career pathways. We have to make sure they're a clean four-course sequence leading to a post-secondary plan. Every pathway we have is complete with four courses and is documented on a program of study template that you see on the screen. We have an expectation of communication to schools. If a school changes a course inside of pathway, we have to know about it. Prior to this expectation, they may change a course, an SPDM may adjust, and we may not know, therefore that sheet's not correct. So now we have a system of communication where when schools add it, add, delete, or change a course, they let us know and we communicate properly. We're doing a lot of work on course codes, every course code entered has to be accurate, so if there's a change, that also has to align, and systems to verify. The final strategy was CTE teams more coherence, and schools now have designated a team of an assistant principal counselor academy coach, lots of training and communication from our office to them in the guidelines that you see there. Improved collaboration with our counselors on how to schedule students, CTE teacher training this summer in conference, and reorganizing our whole office with a team will help improve that coherence. So, there's just been some highlights going on. As you know, we're onboarding three new Academy Louisville schools, we have sixty-two signed business partners, we have seventeen thousand kids in wall-to-wall academies, we have eight-hundred-and-sixty-two certifications earned and counting daily. Five thousand students have taken field trips, we've retained twenty of our twenty-one brand-new occupational-based teachers, that's a welder, a carpenter, a nurse. We, JCPS, has registered with the Labor Cabinet, we'll be getting our number so we can become our own apprentice in early childhood and mechanical areas and industrial maintenance, all those areas. And just a little added note, I just happened to be working on that day, which prompted a question. We're meeting with the Kentucky College of Art and Design, we know that the state does not recognize our arts as a career pathway, but we have the ability to ask for a hybrid pathway and seek approval, so we're going to take it from a different approach because we value our arts by merging art with business, and let's see if we can't do an art and business entrepreneur management pathway, see if we can't work in the value of our arts for kids. So that was just a little add-on, it's one of many things. Time. Questions?
Close.
Close.
Questions, Ms. Duncan?
Yes, ma'am.
I am so impressed with how you have taken hold of this, because it is very complex, all of that information, how it's entered, how courses are labeled, all of that stuff, very complex. No wonder things were shaky, but you have really taken hold of it, and we all appreciate that.
It's a huge team, team effort, lots of folks working on this data across the board, school level and district level, lots of folks, so thank, but thank you.
It's a major accomplishment. I wanted to ask you a question, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Last week I was with other school board members across the state, and they were complaining about their CTE programs in the sense that they were having trouble finding people certified to teach all of the offerings that they had, to keep teachers and teach those. Is that an issue for us, to find the people with the right certifications to teach these things?
So far, it has not, other than the field of aviation. We've had a challenge in the aviation area there to expand, and some ROTC instructors have been a little bit of a challenge, but we've retained, we fielded all twenty-one positions this first round, and we've retained twenty of twenty-one. We put in a support system for those teachers. They didn't, occupational teachers did not K-Tip this year, but we put in a support system, a pre-K-Tip, if you will, and we're proud that we retained twenty out of twenty-one. We will be onboarding nineteen in round two of Academies of Louisville, and so far, it seems plentiful, but we're really working to recruit minority teachers in areas like manufacturing, we're working with our partners to get that out in our manufacturing collaboratives. So there's, we're seeking to really adjust how we recruit... So, there's, we're seeking to really adjust how we recruit those teachers, but so far, a lot of talented folks want to come to JCPS. It's pretty exciting.
Fantastic. And NBC is coming.
CNBC will be here next Friday. We'll go to the boat we got at Jaytown. They'll tour some of our Academy Louisville schools. National, want to look at academies in line with the jobs report in the National CNBC. See, I forgot about that, on the 18th.
Yeah.
Little thing like CNBC.
My grandson reminded me, I think at PRP, they're going to be.
Yes, and they'll be there.
Other questions? Dr. Willner.
Thank you for supporting teachers, and especially new teachers, and are there lessons to be learned there that we can do more broadly, because being a first-year teacher is a rough gig?
Yeah, we're, there are actually lots of lessons to be learned by, from the work of the academies and what Kristi has done. We, even what she does with her coaches, the way that, that they are deployed to provide support, there are very significant lessons to be learned, and we are working hard to capture those. We actually talked about that at length today. So, it's, the academies' work is phenomenal.
And we have work to do internally for new teachers, even greater now that the state has announced they will no longer have K-Tip anymore, which is the first-year internship for a teacher. So, we will have to do that internally ourselves, which we will do.
Today, there was a ceremony for the academies. Would you talk about that briefly, please? I know we're running out of time, and I would also like to know at some point with the academies, who the career coaches are and what that looks like, and I'm very concerned about the diversity of career and tech ed. That has always been a strong program.
Yes, ma'am.
It's an opportunity for students. As you know, I sat in your chair some years ago, and I want to make sure that we're not losing the focus for what that has done for so many students who thought they could not learn. It keeps students in school. So, if you could talk briefly about the program today at Spalding, briefly, I know we're running out of time.
This morning, we honored our academy ambassadors. There are 155 of them that have been trained. There are student leaders that when we call upon them, they host our tours, they work with their classmates, they represent their high school and Academy of Louisville. Today, it was amazing to hear their voices. They picked a representative from their team to speak at the podium, and we heard things like, "When I was called upon to be an academy ambassador, it's changed my life. I have learned to network. I have learned to communicate." It was just an incredible ceremony. The academy coaches, there are 11 of them, there will, that have done a tremendous job. They train and deploy with my office. Every two weeks, they train for coherence, and then they deploy out to do the things we promised we would do. They're a tremendous group, all 11 are amazing. They work tirelessly to get the work into the schools with the, with the business partners. We've signed those 62 partners, but today was about students. It was a breakfast and to honor the academy ambassador work, and it was just exceptional. So, Spalding hosted that this morning. Dr. Polio gave remarks. It was just a really great event to hear from the students. It was powerful this morning.
Okay, I don't see any more questions. Ms. Horn?
Can you talk a little bit about this collaboration with the Kentucky Department of Ed and what feedback you've received?
Sure. So, they have, they came in February for our monitoring visit, and during that monitoring visit, we really go line by line through the corrective action plan and all of the activities that have been updated since the last time that they visited. During that time in February, we really were able to have a conversation about, are there other ways that we could collaborate or provide, get additional guidance than just reviewing as a group each particular action step? And so, we had some questions that we wanted to get some feedback from KDE around our CEIS funds that are set aside for, that it's a combination of funds that are, come out of KDE shop and Alicia's shop. And so, we were able to invite KDE back to the table to have some conversations about that particular set-aside funds. And then typically, what we have, had happen over the last few months is, for example, I know in our ECE department, they had a protocol that they were sharing with all their counselors, able to send it to KDE and say, "Can you give us guidance, or can you give us feedback on this protocol before we implement it out to our, our staff?" And so, they were able to give feedback ahead of time rather than after the fact. And so, that's just some examples of how we've collaborated with KDE.
And so, like the KDE technical assistance that you reference, I mean, is, have, is there funding for that in the upcoming, I mean, did they fund that? Did, is that, was that funding to lead?
The CEIS funds are those that are set aside, we are required to set aside, I think, 15%.
No, I'm not talking about that, just from Kentucky Department of Ed. Did they actually fund the, the technical assistance for the upcoming year?
I know that they, when, when they come and visit, they typically bring their staff members with them. They have hired or have contracted with a gentleman, Mike Wofford, who provides particular feedback around ECE issues. I'm not entirely.
There's not, I mean, there's no funding attached to that.
If they're gonna.
It's just.
Not from us. I'm talking about, do they have, I'm asking about the capacity of KDE, what we're evidencing. Are we seeing that they have, is it like multiple people coming in? Are they staffed up to provide technical assistance? I'm just kind of trying to gauge right now, how much technical assistance were, like, in physical manpower from the state? Are they coming here in droves, like with a bunch of people? Do you know what I'm saying?
Our team that comes in is about a dozen people each time they come in, but what they come in for is for one day, to provide our, I mean, the maximum has been a full day?
Yes, they, for the review of the entire CAP, it has been a full day, and they bring anywhere from, you know, eight to 12 people. And then, but for follow-up meetings, that could be anywhere from three to four for a particular item that they are giving us assistance on.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there a motion to receive the quarterly report of the KDE Audit Corrective Action Plan? A motion, Dr. Cobb, seconded by Ms. Duncan, all those in favor, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're moving on to our last information item, and it is my goal that we are out of here before 10 o'clock. So, Dr. Polio, if you would introduce the item, please.
Thank you. Our final one for the evening, it was asked that we update on music and art support plan for 2018-19 school year, since we did make that a budget priority and a significant amount of increased funding for music and art at elementary schools. So, Dr. Smith and Dr. Coleman will bring us a brief report on our support of music and art.
So, what we, what we've provided for you is just a, kind of a quick overview of the kind of support that we provide as a district to schools, to make sure that kids are getting support in, in music and art, as, as you've made a priority. You'll see there are various ways that we do that, but I think even more, more important, not more importantly, but, but what we are doing in addition to that is trying to learn from other places about what they do and how they provide different kinds of supports to students. So, for example, we've looked at neighboring Fayette County to find out how their model looks for providing orchestra for every elementary, or every fifth grader, I think. So, so we are kind of in process of looking to expand what we do and trying to learn from, from different models that are in place.
I don't think I would add anything in relationship to that, per the questions that were asked about the type of support that we're providing. As Dr. Coleman mentioned, the support that we have at the district level is comparable to the districts that we have investigated, and we know that we'll need to consider some additional types of support that teachers can do in relationship to helping their colleagues implement our continued initiatives. So, I don't think I have anything else to add, other than that. It's been, we are currently watching the staffing and hiring context for the district because we know that that was also an important question that was raised at the last board meeting. So, we are working collaboratively with our HR department to make sure that we provide the necessary supports in schools.
Questions, comments? Thank you. Questions and comments? Dr. Willner.
So, when we made music and art a priority for the district, so important for all kinds of reasons, it's a path to gifted and talented, for one reason. So, it's an opportunity to be in line with our new racial equity policy. But I guess in my mind, I envisioned something more than orchestra for, you know, the handful of fifth graders who choose it. It was, you know, what I was, had in mind was music class every week for every kid in every school, and so, is that consistent with what's, what's happening?
So, I guess that's what, yeah, I'm glad you, to clarify that, that's, that's an extra, that's in addition, and so, that's what we're doing, is trying to think about, how can we expand what we do? So, so that's an example that, you know, of something they do in, in Fayette County, and we, you know, wondered how they, how they did that, what that support structure looked like, but that's in addition to day-to-day. And so, HR is going to, they are monitoring closely over the summer, and we are making sure that schools have staffs designated for each. So, yeah.
Good question. Thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Brady?
Actually, I do want to clarify this a little bit more. So, I just want to be very clear. Children in every elementary school are going to be exposed to this on a, at least a once-weekly basis, correct? Because I know that there are children, especially my children and my children's school, whose music classes were eliminated in favor of STEM, which is great, but STEM is better. And I just want to make sure that we're very clear on this, that we're going to have, our children have the opportunity to be exposed to this in elementary school, once a week, every week.
So, the important delineation is every student has access to music and art. So, there are many schools that, that obviously offer multiple types of pathways for students, but every single student and every single elementary school will have access to music and art, so that a school is not saying, "We are choosing STEM over music and art." It will have to be in conjunction with each other. So, I just want to make sure that, that we're saying that.
Yeah, that's not what I thought my intention was when we were talking about this, because, you know, my concern was that we, every elementary school student had music class once a week, and I'm hearing now that that necessarily, it isn't necessarily what we're looking at here. And I was thought, I thought that was what my intention was in pushing for music programs, is that every student, every elementary school would have a music class once a week, as a.
What you're, do you have a clarification on that?
Yeah, they, I mean, it's, it's up to schools. It really is up to schools, how they want to, to do that, how they want to provide those experiences. The exposure to the content is not an option. The way that they want to provide it is, is really up to them. One thing that causes some confusion sometimes is that as elementary teachers, which like Dr. Smith and I are both certified elementary teachers, and good ones, I would think, we are also certified to teach music and art and PE. So, in, in elementary school, that certification is broad, so they don't, you know, they don't necessarily have to have a separate music teacher, although I think it'd be safe to say that would be the preference of most. And certainly, the funding that the board provided is going to boost that a lot.
That was our intention.
Yes, yes. So, but I think we need to monitor and see, you know, see what happens as schools start to staff, but the content's not an option. The experiences, or how they want to provide it.
I thought that would be, we would have the ability by providing this funding to schools, I thought we could earmark it for this, for music instruction, as opposed to, here's some money and decide how you want to expose students. That was not, at least my intention as a board member.
Right.
Let's be clear about site-based decision-making here. I mean, we have some issues on SBDM. We provide the teacher, we provide the access to it, but we are clearly getting into site-based decision-making problems if we mandate the certain way they use the curriculum.
I'm not, my, I guess my delineation is that if we're offering, let's say we're offering X amount of dollars for a music teacher, right? It's up to the site-based decision-making council whether or not to accept that music teacher or not. That's the way I look at it. So, this board, at least as far as my concern, or the way I see it, is I, you know, we send out an allocation to the schools. We say, "Every school can have a music teacher. If they choose not to do that, that's fine, but you don't get the funding associated with that."
Correct. I'm with you on that.
Okay. And that music is a music teacher, not a, here's X amount of money for exposure to music. No, here's X amount of money for a music teacher.
No question about it. I think we're on the same page on that.
Okay, because it doesn't sound like we were.
Well, I think the difference is saying that we have a music teacher that teaches music, which every student has access to that teacher. I think that is the difference. Now, they cannot use that money for any other reason other than a music or an art teacher.
Okay.
But we can't force them to give up another pathway in lieu of music and art.
And if they choose, my thing is that we, I want to make sure that we providing that, but I'd also don't want a situation where, not exactly the same thing, but very early on in my time on the board, we had allocated funding for extra school, or after-school activities, only to find out that not every school is really providing that for the way we had intended. So, you know, my concern is that I just want to make sure that if we're providing money for a music teacher, then it's a music teacher. If they don't want to do that, that's fine, but they don't get the money for it as well.
That is correct. What we will not have are, are schools not offering this in lieu of something else and saying, either we'll use that money for something else. And we won't have, schools will have, so they won't, they will all have access to music and art with this money for a teacher.
Ms. Horn? And then we will, I'll ask for a motion to move forward on the accepting the support plan.
One of the main reasons that, you know, music education is so valuable is because of the brain development. I remember that Dr. Cobb did, brought a whole bunch of research and read it to us, and then we've had multiple people come, and you all have convinced me also that it is such valuable experience. It helps with math, it helps with, you know, just a lot of things. I'm concerned a little bit about how this will be implemented in schools if we want to make sure that all schools are, are equitable with our, the access to art and music. So, I'd like to make sure that we keep our, you know, eye on that to see which schools, its leadership. You know, I've been an SBDM member, so I do understand curriculum. I also understand allocations and, but I would like to just keep our eye on who's choosing not to have it, and, and is it then being distributed, these music instructors, or especially certified music instructors, in an equitable manner? Because that would be concerning if it ends up we were providing funds for art and music, but it wasn't reaching the intent of this board. So, but I'm excited about it. I do have faith that this will be implemented with fidelity, and it will be a journey. It won't happen overnight, so it will happen progressively. But I thank you for this. I'm so excited about this.
Is there a motion to receive the music and arts support plan for 2018-19 school year? Motion by Ms. Horn, seconded by Dr. Cobb, all those in favor, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We are going to move on quickly with what's left on our agenda. Thank you, board members, for working through this as quickly as possible. We are now, I believe, on the board planning calendar. Are there any comments about the calendar? If not, I'll accept a motion to receive the planning calendar. Motion by Board Member Gee, seconded by Mr. Brady, all those in favor, motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Committee reports, are there any committee reports that we need to hear about this evening? No discussion on that. Moving on to board reports. Board reports. Mr. Brady and Ms. Duncan.
I just want to quickly send out a thanks to the student, for the Student Action Symposium that was put on by Fern Creek's Black Student Union. I think it was the weekend before last. That was a really great event. There's lots of different seminars that were put on by the students, for students, and lots of interesting material that was presented there. Couple requests, at some point, we may want to consider having some of those students present in front of the board because there was really some impressive material that they were presenting. And secondly, when we take a look at doing this again at some point, I know this is a first iteration and I know Saturday, during Derby festivities was kind of a, a big challenge to be able to get people out there, but if we can find some way of integrating that a little bit more thoroughly in a community way and also with other students, I think that would be far more, farther reaching and more effective and impactful for our students and community to be able to hear some of the fantastic things and ways our students were presenting. So I just want to send a shout out to Fern Creek Black Student Union for putting on that, that event and for Kip Hopman and Stan, I always forget his, Stan Turisky, Turisky? So sorry, Stan. And for their involvement with that and for Dr. Carmichael. So thank you.
Okay, Ms. Duncan?
Okay, just wanted to update us on the, I attended the local school board member advisory council meeting with Dr. Lewis last Tuesday and seven other board members from around the state. And he shared some of the information they gathered on graduation requirements and interest in how to expand that. And he also emphasized the fact that we're, the state's 65% college and career-ready and he says 35% are not and he wants all of them college and career-ready. But of course, there was no talk of resources to go with that, but he did, he did urge us on toward that direction. Then the rest of the meeting was really consumed with giving us an update on the budget and what had changed in the budget. We did a lot, we talked about that a lot during our, our budget session, the positives. And one big positive is that any extra SIC money now will go into transportation. And, and then related to that, transportation, he shared with us, I don't know, or not he, but the person presenting, shared with us that that's been moved to 62% funding. So I don't know, I have, I have to ask about that one, but he did announce that it was 62% funding for transportation. And right now, I think we're 43% funded in transportation. Some of the negatives of the session included the lack of funding for low-scoring schools, our, our schools that are falling in, you know, that are, are, we used to call them priority schools, they're comprehensive target schools. And the funding was taken away from those. And then he talked about the, some of the legislative updates that have taken place and I think, including so many things they've added for our schools to, to teach, abstinence education, financial literacy education, suicide prevention training and then performance-based professional development for our teachers. But it was, it's always an interesting session and I just wanted to get everybody updated on what we met on. I only had one moment, but the, Dr., we were all talking about our, the nickel tax. All the districts were talking about nickel tax and how they were, what they were doing to try and pursue this and, and I couldn't pass it up because I asked him, I said, "Well, when a district, when a school board loses its authority to tax, who raises those taxes? Do you?" And he did not like that. He did not appreciate my question, but I thought it was worth asking right there.
We do.
With everything. So anyway, he, he did tell me that he couldn't answer that right then, so, but it was a great meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Dr. Willner?
I'm going to keep it really brief, but like all of you, and you were all out in the community a lot and hear from a lot of folks and I've just heard tremendous support and appreciation for the work of this board. And Dr. Polio is an eight-person leadership team of this district. I'm hearing it all over the place. I want to just express my appreciation to all of you for working so diligently to bring Dr. Polio, to recruit him and to hire him as our superintendent. So we did a tremendous amount of work together to make that happen. I just want to thank you. I want to mention one event. This Thursday night at 6:30 at King Solomon Baptist Church, there's a big event, the teachers are invited, all school staff are invited. My understanding is that the mayor will be there, that other elected officials will be there and that it's, to stand in support of Dr. Polio and the, the elected school board's leadership. So just want to invite everyone to that event on Thursday evening.
Also want to remind everyone that on Thursday evening at 6 o'clock at the Ramada Inn, the PTA Awards banquet will be held at that time and also at the Kentucky Center for African-American Heritage. It's at 6 o'clock, Dr. Marshall, the celebration for the men's of color. So Thursday is a really big evening for us. And also at the last board meeting, I promised you all that I was going to share something because last month was National Librarians Month and there are some pictures that Angie's going to throw up there for me because every day, if you were on Twitter, there was a different library featured in the district. So I wanted just to spend some time to show you some of the librarians that are working very hard every day in the Jefferson County Public Schools. And I wanted to also say to you that I wanted to share about a librarian that was special in my life. Her name is Barbara Miller. She's a resident, was a resident of Louisville, Kentucky. She became a children's librarian in 1951 at the racially segregated Western Branch of the Louisville Free Public Library. Several years later, she integrated the professional staff at the main library. I'm bringing this up because this is a great night since we're talking about racial equity, that once upon a time, the only library that we could go to was the Western Library. So initially, she went in as a librarian. She advanced to the director of children's services. Ms. Miller gained every community-wide notoriety as a storytelling lady and I will say that she was awesome as a storytelling lady because my daughter had an opportunity to experience, Ms. Miller. She was on T. Barbie Ranch and after her retirement in 1978, she served as the president of the Kentucky Library Association, a member of the Spalding University Overseers, the Speed Museum Board and an active member in several local organizations. In 1987 to 88, she was both an interviewer and subject on a grant-funded oral history project of the Louisville Free Public Library. I just thought that there was no better time to bring that forward and to point out the wonderful librarians that we have in the schools. And for me, librarians make a significant difference in the life of all of our children because they're someone else that embraces our children where they are and takes them to a whole nother level. So I wanted to share some of the pictures. This is last month's report, so thank you for allowing me to do that. And I also wanted to get it recorded about Barbara Miller, who was historic in many of our lives along the way and I will always remember her. She was a great encourager and if she was here today, she would tell me to keep pushing. So I'm going to keep pushing. So that completes my report. There is no need for an executive session. We have taken, I'm sorry, Ms. Horn? Ms. Horn?
I just wanted to make a public statement. I feel that it's important to do this. I'm honored to serve with you all as my fellow board members. I was elected in 2014 to represent almost 100,000 citizens and taxpayers in District Three. A high percentage of our funding comes from our local tax base, our property taxes and occupational taxes, which the citizens of District Three contribute mightily. If I become advisory, the citizens and taxpayers of District Three will have no voice and they will have no vote.
Again, there's no need for an executive session and at this time, I will call for a motion for adjournment by Mr. Brady, seconded by Ms. Duncan, all those in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much and we are adjourned at 10:02. Thank you. Did the best we could.